Ready? Aloha, everyone. It is 7 o'clock and the Wahihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board is called to order. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We do have our agenda in front of us, and I just want to make a quick motion on our agenda. Following our first responder reports, I am asking for board approval to move our presentation from the Queens Medical Center Wahihua up after our first responder reports. All in favor?
Cherry Shikawa?
Yes.
Hold on a minute. We cannot hear you down here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's still soft.
For everyone else to hear.
Check, check, check. Is that better? Check. Okay. Okay. Aloha, everyone. Again, this meeting is called to order. I would first like to ask board approval to go to move one item up on the agenda following our first responder monthly reports, and that would be to move up the presentation and update on the Queens Medical Wahihua facility. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Thank you, everyone. Returning to our agenda for our first responder monthly reports, calling up our fire department.
Good evening, everyone. Captain Ben Casemar, Wahihua Fire Station. I was going to go over statistics for September. So we had two structure fires, three brush fires, six nuisance fires, five activated alarms. We also had a total of 83 medical calls, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, one, sorry, seven motor vehicle collisions. And that is it as far as statistics. I'm going to go over our safety tip for the month. So smoke alarms, make them work for you. We have three tips. Install smoke alarms in every bedroom outside each separate sleeping area, like a hallway, and on each level of your home. A second tip is test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button. And our last tip is replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or stop responding to your tests. That is it. Is there any questions for the fire department?
Thank you, Captain. Any questions from the board for our fire department? Questions virtually from our fire department? And questions from the community here. I stand by. Alicia, you have a question? Alicia, do you have a question?
Hello?
Hi, Alicia. Do you have a question for our fire department?
Yes, about the vandals. Someone's been vandalizing on Westerveld Street, and I was wondering if anyone was caught on that and tagging buildings in Wahihua.
As far as our side, we don't know anything about those, but you can go ahead and ask that question again when HPD comes up.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Alicia. Any other questions for our fire department? Yes, and if you could go, hi, can you go by the microphone and introduce yourself? Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to ask if you were on scene at the day of the mud bog?
Yes, we were on scene.
If you can share a little bit what happened?
And also, can we get your name?
Oh, Lee Ayaw.
So the question was just as far as what happened at the mud bog incident. So we got called for a person pin. What actually happened is one of the mud boggers, he had some injuries from driving all day, so he couldn't really get out of his vehicle, so we had to end up cutting him out of his vehicle. Not that he got entangled with it or anything, but he just couldn't get out of it.
What you call?
Huh?
Mud bog.
It was like a mud bog kind of race?
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
So firefighter, I mean captain, would you consider that a permitted activity or was that an illegal activity?
Oh, that I don't know. We didn't have any prior knowledge of it. It was some kind of organized event, but yeah, we didn't.
Okay.
We don't know what.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for our fire department?
Cherry Shikawa?
Yeah, I have a hand in it.
Thank you.
I have a hand. Go ahead. Go ahead. If you can go up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Joe, I wonder, because he denied that there was a fight and the cops had two pepper balls.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that a little closer to the microphone? What is the question?
Yeah, they said there was a fight on the news, and he totally denied it. Was it, was there a fight?
No, I'll answer. Yeah, I'll answer. Yeah. So the question was, he's asking if I knew anything about a fight at the mud bog. We didn't respond to a fight. We didn't, we don't have any knowledge of a fight. Yeah, they might know, so they'll be up next. You might be able to ask them. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for our fire department? Trying to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay, TJ?
Just to follow up on what you said about the event, you said he was injured. You guys had to take him out?
Yes.
Were tools used to remove him?
Yeah, we used our extrication tools. So I guess it's kind of tight quarters, those kind of vehicles. So we just had to cut some piping around them so we could actually put in some, like a backboard, and then take them out appropriately so we didn't cause any further injuries.
Was he taken away by ambulance? Do you know?
Yes.
Do you know what the status of the visit was?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right now, anything else you want to share?
Oh, no, that's all from HFD.
Thank you very much.
How's it, Kurt Fivella? The news also had said that the car had flipped over, and that was related that the car had flipped over, and that was also misinformation. There's a lot of misinformation going around, but again, the car did not flip over. It was a long day, like he said, of driving in the car, and that's the only reason why he couldn't get out of the car. And nothing to do with a flip over or accident of the cars being in one accident. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. Any other questions for our fire department? Hearing none. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work you do.
Be safe out there.
Thank you. And calling up next is our police department.
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Baisa Romal Baisa from the Hanoi Police Department, Wahihua Police Station. Reporting for the month of October so far, we've had zero assault cases, eight burglary cases, 34 motor vehicle collisions, four robberies, two car break-ins, and about 804 calls for service for the Wahihua area and Whitmore area. Halloween is coming up, so I'm not saying be paranoid, but be careful with the, when you go trick or treating, especially the kids, right? Watch out for tampering of candies. Just kind of do a quick inspection. We haven't had too much incidents in the last few years, but it can happen. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board for HPD? Yes, go ahead. TJ followed by Michelle.
Thank you. Have you folks had any, since the last meeting, have you had any calls to the Avocado Street address? The, you know, the building that we're talking, Avocado near Kamehameha and Avocado near Walker? I think you know where I'm talking about, got the two abandoned buildings. Have you folks had any calls about that area?
Not that I know of. If anything, our community policing team might have some information that's not called out to all the patrol officers, but yeah, not for patrol.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Michelle?
Hi.
Hi.
Then 800, 800 calls, you said, right? How many of those are that you actually have to send an officer?
All 801, 804.
Yeah. How many do you actually have to send an officer?
All 804, yes.
Yes. Oh my gosh. Is that unusually high or that's your average?
Um, for this area, that's kind of average. Yeah, depending on, you know, certain parts of the islands have more calls. This is actually not that bad, but for the area itself, that's kind of average.
And you have enough officers to cover this sufficiently?
We, yes, we make do. Yes, we do our best.
Okay, thank you, TJ, and then we go to the audience.
Thank you. Just wanted to follow up on your question. All 801, is that for the 96786 zip code? Or does that also include 96791 and 96712?
No, only 96786. In fact, part of Schofield is also in there, and I think that's a different zip code.
Yeah. Does this also include the area around Pomahoe Village?
Yes.
The statistics that you gave tonight includes Pomahoe?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And just for the record, I believe you said 804?
804.
Not 801. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members? And hearing none, questions from the community? Please be sure to state your name. Thank you.
There really was a fight at the event, and they had to break the fight because it was mentioned in the news.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
I just wanted to know if there really was a fight and the cop had to break it up because it was mentioned on news, and I saw a letter and an email that Scotty Wong totally denies that.
Which event is this?
No, the mud bog, the mud drags. I'm not sure.
So he's talking about the mud bog that was described earlier.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Yeah, you were out.
Yeah, because it was mentioned on the news, when I watched the news, that there was a fight.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm not aware of any major fights. If there is any, we have our share. Every, just about every event, we have fights here and there, arguments and stuff. But I'm not aware of any major fights that happen. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the community? Any questions virtually for our HPD? Is that Alicia? Alicia, do you have a question?
Yes, I noticed that there's tagging on buildings. I was wondering if anyone's been caught, and if anything further has been happening with the dirt bikers. There's a lot of them around.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of the question.
Talk about tagging buildings?
Yeah.
Um, not that I'm aware of, not that, not enough that our district information officer sends it out to the patrol district. And what was the second question? Sorry?
Um.
Oh, dirt bikes. No, yeah, we haven't done a project recently, but we did one last month for dirt bikes and e-bikes, and there has been a decrease, so much so that we kind of stopped doing projects on it, but nothing major to report on it.
Two more questions, please. I noticed that there's a lot of homeless out on the streets. They're sleeping there, staying overnight, and anything being done about that, because some of the, at least some of the residents are concerned because they're scared to go out walking any time of day. And the other question is, what's going on at that Avocado Street property where there was a game room? Because I see people going in and out.
I cannot talk about active investigations on Avocado Street as far as homelessness. Homelessness is not a crime. If you do see a person, be it homeless or not, commit any crime, just, I suggest you call 911. But them just looking homeless or being homeless is not a crime in and of itself.
But what happens if they obstruct the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Like there was one.
Right, I'm sorry. Yes, you can call 911, and we can ask the person to move.
Okay, because there was that guy on Mango Street, and the police didn't do anything for the longest time. And then one day, they had him moved, so that was a question that people had. Why did they wait so long in order to have him move?
Yeah, there are resources that we can refer them to, and then a lot of times it's up to them to accept the resource or not. Yeah, but for the most part, a lot of it, I mean, we're not just going to be heartless and kick them off and, you know, but for the most part, we try to move them along if they are breaking the law.
But to obstruct the entire sidewalk, is there's an ordinance of that, right?
Correct. That is against the law. Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions before we move on? I do have one question for you before we move on. So in this, we are in Whitmore Village area. There is a continuing complaint of vehicles, whether it's owned by the neighbors or whatever, vehicles parking in Circle Maoka, to the point where residents are having a hard time reversing out of their driveways. So is there a way that HPD can help to assist in that situation for the neighbors or the families who live here on Circle Maoka, who are having a difficult time because they get blocked in or whatnot? They also have neighbors who are placing cones to block off parking stalls for them. So is there an ordinance or is there something, you know, that HPD can send as a message that to be more mindful or more neighborly to their neighbors where the neighbors don't have to wait in early in the morning trying to get their car out, trying to wake up a neighbor or whatnot to get out? Is there something that can be done to help them with that situation?
The only thing I can suggest is call 911. Of course, goes without saying, be neighborly and be mindful of your neighbor's property, but anybody who blocks access to somebody's driveway, you're supposed to park no closer than four feet to the driveway. So that is, you can get cited for. If you're blocking somebody's driveway, you can actually, your car can actually get towed. So be careful with that. At least you're facing a citation.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, TJ. Last question.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to follow up on your statement about what happened at Sipan Road. How long have you been an officer?
25 years.
Okay, and so a lot of the media outlets had said that HPD responded and ended up using pepper mace balls? To your knowledge, can you help us understand what pepper mace balls are and what kind of actions would warrant the use of pepper mace balls?
Uh, pepper mace balls? I think you're talking about the big canisters of pepper spray. We do use pepper spray, OC spray for, it's not pepper spray, it's oleoresin gas. Little bit different, but we use that for patrol, the patrol officers. The ones you're talking about are usually deployed by our Crime Reduction Unit, Specialized Services Division. Yeah, different from the patrol officers, what we use. So that is generally deployed when there's a big fray or a crime reduction unit happens to be working.
Yeah, thank you very much. Could you go back and for our next meeting in November, could you see if you could bring any more information back about that event and approximately how many pepper mace balls? And I'm only using that term because that's what the media called it. I don't know what the technical term is, what the legal term is, but if you could come back and let us know about how many were deployed, how big a crowd was? And if you could also follow up with the special duty office and to see how many offices were actually deployed that day, and what would the capacity of attendees be for the number of officers that were sent out that day by your special duty office? And we can talk offline about that, if you don't mind, but if you could bring back some answers in November, that would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I also will follow up with you with the other question offline.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Can we give applause for, thanks for our HFD and HPD officers? And at this point, we did go and approve a motion to go out of order. So at this point, I would like to call up our Queens Medical Center to give us an update on the Queens Medical Wahihua Center.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Robin Kalohilani. I'm the COO over Queens West Ham, Wahihua. So I just wanted to give just a little bit of update on the volumes that we've been seeing since we opened. Seen about 6,500 patients come through. About 88% of those are getting discharged right from the emergency department. Where we have about, we have about 12 ambulances coming a day to the department. A lot of work has been done with just right sizing the staffing. I think we're doing excellent with our patient care right now. A lot of work is still going on with the building, so if you see a lot of trucks going on or re-roofing the entire building of the existing building where the emergency room is attached to. We're working on figuring out what the use will be for the long-term care building. That building will not be able to be salvaged right now. There's just, there's just a lot, a lot of stuff going on there, so looking at that. We don't have long-term plans right now on what that space will look like, but we do have immediate plans in place going on right now to expand the emergency room footprint, so adding on additional care spaces there. Our CAT scan is currently outside, so that was the highest priority, I think, for myself, nurse background, is to get that indoors. So that's the first thing that's going to happen. Then we're just moving around the laboratory that's in there. Then we're expanding the front access, so I have a little bit more when you arrive, so that people aren't on the area in the front, the waiting, outside the waiting room, so that's enclosed, a bigger footprint there, and then expanding the clinical space. So all of that will take, I'm thinking, at least 18 months for it to go through permitting. So that's the highest priority right now is just kind of right sizing that space. So I know that there's been a lot of kind of questions on when are we going to expand more outpatient services? So immediately after that, we would be looking at more of diagnostics and getting access closer in the community for maybe mammography, imaging, more fixed things, and then potentially even expanding on with laboratory services also. Do you have questions for me?
That would be great. Thank you, and thank you for being here, because I know it's a drive out here, but you know, the community, they have been asking what's the next step? So thank you for being here, and we do have a big crowd, but everyone, please keep your questions real succinct, because I know everybody has questions, so we want to try and get to everyone. So you had a question?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before I do that, I apologize. Our other board member Sylvia Coke is on with us virtually on the lower corner.
Hi, you said that you're expecting the permits to take 18 months?
No, 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 that would be like with permit and construction time inclusive. So we always cross our fingers with permits.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Joe.
You're looking at an 18-month timeline right now. At what point do you think Queens is going to look at putting more beds in the hospital, more rooms for longer-term patients?
So expanding more into the inpatient?
Yeah.
I would say we don't have a timeline on that just yet. So immediate is that, then we're going to look at next, you know, three to five years and five to seven years. So I don't have like an update, but as soon as we get it, I will bring it here.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Erin.
Hi, hi. In terms of the three to five years, what is sort of the planning process? Would it be the board of directors? How are you going to decide what the outpatient care is?
Yeah, I think what we do is we come to these listening sessions to see like what is, what's the community asking for? We've heard long-term care beds is good. We've heard that care closer to home. So right now, I think just as an organization, we're working on a big expansion at West. Doesn't really help right here, but it does increase that. So there's a lot of capital going into that project. I think once that's done, then it gives us the opportunity for me to get in line again and then advocate for the needs out here.
And TJ?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Homberg, and I'm sorry, the gentleman back there in the blue shirt. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing for our community. So I just wanted to ask, you said 6,500, since you folks opened, 88% were discharged. That leaves approximately 780, 800. Have most of those been transferred to Queens West, Queens Downtown, Strab, Kaiser? Do you have any data?
So I can break it down. I would say when we first opened, majority of the patients were going downtown to Montamona Campus, and that was just because of capacity constraints across the system. So Kaiser patients go to Kaiser, Tripler patients will try to get right back as long as there's open beds. That's our first point, to get them where their services are supposed to be. More recently, I would say patients that can go to West are going to West now, and that's just because we have a little bit of a better flow of patients going through. So it's a little quicker, it's a little easier, so that is also new for Queens West getting, because we're usually on the opposite end, transferring out. So the side where we can be accepting is a really good synergy going on. And I would say that when we're getting ready to open, we had a lot of the Wahihua staff go through West and also train just to learn the Queens process. So that's beneficial. There's a connection. It makes it a little easier. But we use the Alcahe Command Center, which looks at all beds all over so that they can see where's the closest.
And Chair, just one quick follow-up to that. Of the 88%, that was discharged, that's approximately 5,720. How many of them are frequent flyers? Percentage, you don't have to give me numbers, percentage. And I'm sorry, frequent flyers are those patients who come in all the time to use the ER?
So, so our vulnerable population that become high utilizers. Uh-uh, no way. I wouldn't say that.
Thank you. I don't think you can.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah, I feel, and I'm a community health nurse by background, so I would, I feel like it is not that high. You will see some that come more often, but that just means they need better coordination, better connections on the community. And I think when it feels that high, it's because it's impactful. You remember the name? So it feels like much, much more on it. So we've lined up more social services and then just opportunities to get people home a little bit closer, and that we're utilizing our network across the system, so.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
But we still have our opportunities.
Yes, yes, yes.
Still are learning.
But thank you again, Mr. Homberg, and I'm sorry, thank you for all the work that Queens is doing in our community. We appreciate you.
No, thank you. Thanks for letting us come and give an update. Thank you very much. Hold on for a second. I'm going to offer time to, anyone here in the audience have a question for Queens? Okay, hearing none. Virtually any questions. Sylvia or anyone, questions for Queens? Okay, hearing none. One last thing. Let's just take just a quick, anybody want to just yell out if, for Queens, if they're looking at what is the next potential thing? What, whether it's women's things or men, what would you like to see at Wahihua General? Anybody want to yell just something out that they can walk away with when they go back to Queens?
Take over the old medical records.
Medical records, and then, what's that? Gynecology?
What was that?
Gynecology? And what's that? Birth. So that's three then. You have birthing, right?
Well, yeah, and I think.
Just suggestion, just to give you an idea of the variety.
The good thing about that is that is all stuff that we're talking about. And I would say wound care is always super, super important, and we were talking about that last week. So it's just, it's super validating.
Good job. Yeah, very good. Thank you so much. So we're all united as a community. Thank you very much for being here. We know it's a long drive. Thank you. And oh, wait, Robin, don't forget, the lighting on the sign for Wahihua is really dim compared to the Queens Medical. Do you need, driving home now, go up to, go up on Kilani Avenue and look at the side of the hospital? The Queens Medical is huge and bright, and Wahihua is very small and dull. Thank you, because we shine. Wahihua shines. We are so proud of our community, so please light us up. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to our agenda, and we are now on our monthly reports, calling up our military. Nicole, virtually, usually? Nicole from Congressman Takuta's office? Nope. Okay, hearing none. We're going to move down to our US Army. Adam?
Good evening, everybody. Just one announcement from the Army this month. It's our November Job Fair. So US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on November 19th at the Aliamanu Military Reservation Gym. It begins at 8:30 a.m. and ends at 2 p.m. This event is open to the public. There will be job offers and provisional hiring the day of the job fair. Advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com. Click on the employment banner to learn of openings and how to apply online. Walk-ins are also welcome and should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume, or application. There are opportunities in business operations like golf, bowling, food service, and many others. The Child Youth Services or CYS, we having openings to consider. For those who work in CYS, there are a variety of benefits such as retirement, access to all recreation facilities, discounted childcare training, and commissary privileges. So.
Okay, thank you for the report. Any questions from our board? Yes, go ahead. Hey, thank you for the report. Any questions from our board? Yes, go ahead. June?
Actually, just a comment because thank you for not, I know you're not responsible for it, or the Army's not even responsible, the Air Force. Um, thank you to the Air Force for not flying at three o'clock in the morning and twelve o'clock midnight. Because I know there was a lot of uh C seventeen activity, but at least it wasn't in the middle of the night. So, and last year it was. Thank you.
Oh, on the behalf of the Air Force, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any other questions from the board? Uh, Sylvia, online, you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone virtual, any questions for our Army? Seeing none in the community here, any questions for our Army? Okay, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our Navy.
Aloha, everybody. My name is Jim Newman and I'm with Navy Region Hawaii. I'll bring you our, uh, our update this evening. I brought several copies of the Mo'olelo Newsletter uh that I have over there on the table. Looks like this. Just talks about many of the projects and events that the Navy is involved with in Hawaii. Couple of highlights from the region uh over this last month. We've had a couple of names, namesake ships that have visited Hawaii. The USS Chung Hoon, which used to be homeported here, is now homeported in San Diego. But they did celebrate their twentieth anniversary of their commissioning here in Hawaii. Uh, for those of you who don't know, Admiral Gordon uh Chung Hoon, he graduated from Hunahau in twenty nineteen twenty-nine. His niece was the ship's sponsor of the Chung Hoon. The other thing about Admiral Chung Hoon is he's a Navy Cross. He received the Navy Cross. He received the Silver Star. He was a destroyer captain during World War Two, but he was also a crew member of the Arizona. So he's, he's an Arizona survivor, actually. He was in Honolulu when the attack happened. He wasn't on the ship, but a lot of connections there to Hawaii, but they were here, did some, did some good work here. Also, the Arlie Burke class guided missile destroyer, the Daniel Illinois, returned to their home port this month after completing a historic maiden deployment. Um, they promoted regional stability, security, deterred aggression, and protected the free flow of commerce throughout their nine-month deployment. So we're glad to have the Daniel Illinois back. Um, this month, the Navy is going to be launching what's called the La Lima. We actually have already started La Lima Navy. So next year will mark the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the United States Navy. So we are going to strive to do two-hundred-and-fifty acts of community service this year. So over the next twelve months, uh voluntary community service performed by sailors and civilian personnel in Hawaii, reflecting the value of La Lima, many hands working together. So we started this Saturday cleaning up the Pearl Harbor bike path. We had about a hundred and twenty sailors and civilians who turned up for that cleanup. So be looking for more of those activities that'll be going on through this year. The Navy also had, Navy Region Hawaii also has several hiring fairs throughout the year. We encourage you to visit our LinkedIn page and our Facebook pages to keep up to date in those. And the Maulelo Newsletter has that in there. The other thing I wanted to mention, I mentioned it last month, I did print out a little flyer here for December seventh. This is the eighty-third anniversary of December seventh, what will be called Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Uh, it is free and open to the public. It's going to be on Saturday, December seventh this year at the Pearl Harbor uh National Memorial Visitor Center. You can go to PearlHarborEvents.com to give you more information about the different events that are going on because it's more than just what happens on December seventh. We have different events. Also talks about parking, traffic, and so forth. But we, we very much encourage folks to, to go out to that ceremony if you can. Losing our veterans on a rapid, at a rapid rate. So we want to take every opportunity that we can to honor our veterans and, and learn the legacy of our veterans. But uh, that will conclude my presentation, but I'll take any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board? TJ?
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, by the way, for all the information. Love the Mo'olelo included in there. I love that the Navy is trying to incorporate the use of Olelo Hawaii in your language. But I wanted to ask, I watched the town hall meeting on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, in which Colin Goddard, G-O-D-D-A-R-D, and his company Hydro Panels made a presentation. Now, this has to do around the water supply at Red Hill. I'm wondering, is his company or any other DOD vendor, because Goddard and his company Hydro Panels is already a DOD vendor? Are they considering using him as another source of providing water for the basis? And also, there's also another company called YEA Water Solutions that has um atmospheric water generators. And YEA is actually a locally based company. Colin Goddard and Hydro Panels is from California. Have you folks explored the possibilities of using them here to supply water in lieu of Red Hill since it's being shut down?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't answer that question. I will have to get a Red Hill representative to answer that. I can, I can provide that question to them and then ask them to give us an answer and then try to have them come out at one of the board meetings.
That would be great. If you could at November, because we are coming up into Lono Makahiki and we are coming up on the wet season.
Yes, ma'am.
So we would really appreciate the response in a timely manner.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Erin?
Hi, thanks for being here. Um, I have a question about the, I guess it was the December, the Pearl Harbor um memorial that you're having. Is there any part of that, and I'm not a historian, but it's going to commemorate sort of what was on that land prior to Pearl Harbor being built?
Uh, we don't have anything planned for that. I will say though, that one of the things that I, I'm very proud of um, that is being celebrated every day is we do have the Fort Island Historic Trail. And in that trail, it's a, it goes all around Fort Island, it's about four mile trail. We have fifteen locations on the trail where we talk about history. Yes, we talk about Navy history. Yes, we talk about military history, but we also talk about the history of Fort Island and Pearl Harbor. And we did work with native Hawaiian groups to make sure that that's a big part of, of what they're talking about on that trail. So that's, that's not the December seventh ceremony. We do have, so we have a wreath presentation for that ceremony and we have a National Guard representative who's representing the territory of Hawaii uh for that ceremony. So we are representing those who are here, the civilians who are here that were serving here. Uh, but I would say the Fort Island Trail is something that is there every single day that any of our sailors, any, any, anybody in the community can actually come out and see that.
Okay, so I hope you do consider that for that Memorial Day of like maybe what was um on that land prior to it being um taken by the military.
Okay. I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions virtually? I mean, I'm sorry, can I go virtually first?
Sure. Thank you.
Virtually any questions? Okay, hearing none from the community. Any questions? Okay, back to TJ.
Thank you so much. Just to follow up on what uh board member Mendelson asked, what community or what Hawaiian or cultural groups are you folks consulting with? And have you folks actually looked to the lineage that comes from that area to provide information about what was there at Pearl Harbor before it became occupied by the military?
I'd have to, I, I don't have a specific name for you right now. I'd have to get that name for you, but.
Jimmy, Jimmy, gotta talk to the, into the mic.
I can find out who that was. I don't have a name for you right now.
Thank you very much. We look forward to a timely response. Thank you.
Chris Fivella, a couple of questions. Um, with the Red Hill situation, um, I heard that you guys don't have representation. Um, you guys stopped coming to the meetings and dialoguing with the working group. Um, first of all, I want to know why. And then the second one is, um, if you do what these board members are asking, the original name to that area that was sacred to our community and our people was called Pearl Lagoon. And you know why it was called Pearl Lagoon? Okay, well, look it up. The reason why it's Pearl Lagoon because it was all the oysters and everything was in there. It was very bountiful for our people to go over there and eat to the military keeping contaminated them. Second, I like to know when is the cleanup plan for Pearl Harbor? We have a cleanup plan for Red Hill. When are we going to clean up Pearl Harbor? Because Pearl Harbor is contaminating my community right now. Iroquois, there's a beach park, our bush slowly leaking because of so-called graveyard or whatever you guys like call them, you guys like keep them there. But what about the people that live there? We live there. We suffering. So I don't know when you guys are going to have that plan.
I don't have an answer for you, sir. Again, I will just have to take that back and, and uh express your concerns.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, James. There was one? Oh, the, I apologize, Dean.
Yes.
Did you have a question or a comment?
A question for Jim, please.
Okay, stand by. Jim? Um, I'm sorry, adding one more question if you don't mind. Go ahead, Dean.
Aloha, Jim. Thank you for coming tonight. Uh, I just wanted to ask if you could give me a call. I'd like to talk to you about a um an award ceremony, uh, bringing reinstating it back since it has to deal with the uh, the Navy. And this is pertaining to the Royal Order of the Osinia, which was created by King Kalakaua for community service. I think this would be something that the Navy would be uh very beneficial in presenting to its community members that uh benefit and also help in that area of Pearl Harbor.
Okay, give you a call?
Yes.
Dean, yeah, Dean, I can put you in contact with Jim.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're moving on to our government agencies. Um, Board of Water Supply. Hi, Nicole.
Aloha, Chair, Board, residents, and guests. FYI, there's a few chairs in here if anybody wants to come sit down. Uh, I am Nikki from the Board of Water Supply. I don't have too much to report tonight. Um, just we had two water main breaks in the Waihua area in September. On September twenty-second, a twelve-inch cast iron water main broke at five sixty-seven Avocado Street. And on the thirtieth, a six-inch cast iron water main broke at two oh three Kamehameha Highway. Uh, there was also a twelve-inch main break today at six sixty California Avenue. Uh, the water was turned off for a bit, but as of four o'clock, it was turned back on. So if anybody's having problems with your service, just let me know. And then for our announcements, um, we're just kicking off our annual poster and poetry contest. Our twenty-twenty-five theme is Worth a Buy. Um, it's open to students, grades K through six for the posters and grades seven through twelve for poetry. And the deadline to enter is February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. You can go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com slash WCWContest for more information. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions from the board? Yes, go ahead, Joe.
The poster contest, do you go to the schools and make them aware of all these contests?
Yeah, our communications team has worked tirelessly with the schools. Um, it's also open to the homeschooling picky as well. So you don't have to be in the brick and mortar to participate. And you guys will actually be the first people getting calendars. So I will drop those off to Jeannie.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. It's always appreciated. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to questions from the community. Any questions? Yes, if you could go um introduce yourself on the microphone and then ask your question. Thank you.
Good evening, Shar Kuhumoku. I wanted to know how much of our water supply is being diverted? And how much of it is being poured out of our communities? Out of our communities, how mu- how much are we exporting of our water and how much of it is being poured or diverted away from our communities?
Sorry, Shar, I don't have an answer yet, but I will take that back and um, I'll let the board know, but if I can get your contact as well, so we can contact you directly.
So Shar, before you leave tonight, if you can give me your information, yeah. And just specifically, just so that we can be very clear, your question is what water is deriving from our area, Waihua and what more area? Or are you talking about on a larger scale? Okay, okay, thank you. And then you had a question in the back in the pink, if you could state your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheila.
Oh, gotta go closer to the mic.
I'm Sheila. Um, I don't know if it's been addressed before, but are you guys going to repave Kilani Avenue and Glen Avenue that you guys are digging up?
Yeah, if everybody can go to the microphone so we can hear, thank you.
So uh, she's asked if we could repave Kalani and Glen, and it's going to be done. Uh, it's part of the water system improvement program. So as soon as all of the repairs are done and replacements are made, they're going to repave everything.
Okay, thank you. And any estimated, like, is that like in the next year or roughly?
Um, I believe we have a few. I believe we have a few more months left on the project, but I will get an exact.
Okay.
Or an approximate date for you.
Okay, thank you. Let me go virtually now. Anyone virtually for, with a question for BWS, Board of Water Supply? Okay, Dean first and then Alicia.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I just, just a comment regarding your water main breakdown California Avenue today. The lane closure, uh, which is uh required by federal law to be a certain distance from the site. Uh, what, what didn't take place today. They just closed it off at Lake Hua in California. Uh, immediately surrounded the job site. So traffic coming down was all on two lanes and then all of a sudden they got pushed into one lane. So there was no tapering of uh the advanced lane or the uh road closure signs in advance. So you could just remind crew to please put that out and post it. And I know you guys do have uh safety systems usually coming out to to do the tapering of the lane and stuff.
Okay, Dean, I'm not sure if everyone heard that. Um, excuse me, everyone who is outside, if you can talk more quietly, those who are outside, because it's coming in this way and we're having a hard time hearing. Um, so if you guys can just kind of, you know, tone it down a little bit. And Dean, I think you need to repeat, I apologize, but we couldn't, it was going in and out.
Okay, uh, once again, the proper tapering of a lane for a job site is start distance of three thousand feet with signs advising road closure or lane closure. That did not take place today regarding that uh uh emergency water break on California Avenue. Uh, the road closed, lane closed was right there at Lake Hua, yeah, Lake Hua and uh California. So you had two lanes of traffic just crossing the intersection merging into one lane. So if you could just, you know, remind the group, the crews to put up proper signage and tapering the lane.
By Lake Hua, California, right?
Yeah.
And I'm going to ask everyone outside again, please. We need to be able to hear everyone. Thank you.
Apologies for that, Dean. That should have been done. That's our normal practice, but I will definitely follow up with our field operations team.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Board of Water Supply at this point? Oh, Alicia, I apologize. Thank you, Alicia.
Hi, thank you. Hey, Nicole. Um, I'm, I'm speaking in regards to the, I think you mentioned the water main break on Avocado. Um, this is going along with what Dean said. Um, there were signs that were close to the job site. But um there were no signs at the corner of Olive and Walker. So uh, drivers were going all the way down to Avocado only to find that uh there was a work being done. So could you please ensure that uh proper signage is up?
Absolutely. Well, do I apologize about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Thank you. Okay, and thank you, Nicole. Okay, any other questions? For Board of Water Supply? Okay, thank you, Nicole. Okay, moving on, we have our State Department of Transportation, Fawn? Okay. Okay, then we're going to go on to our section four on the agenda, which is residents' concerns and community announcements. I only have two right now, then I'll open it up for um any other announcements. So from the City's Department of Parks and Recreation, the Waihua War Memorial Swimming Pool located at the George F. Wright Waihua District Park is currently closed due to electric issues with the pool's pump. The pool's pump has been experiencing intermittent electrical issues and closures over the past two weeks. Our city electricians are unable to make the needed repairs and they are working on getting a contractor to assist. The Department of Parks and Recreation sincerely apologizes for the inconvenience while this facility is closed for repairs. Updates on the reopening of the pool will be provided as details become available. The second announcement is from the Waihua Community Business Association, who requests support of the annual Waihua Town Center Parade on Friday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you are interested, to please contact the WCBA. Oh, and you have more info on that?
Regarding uh that parade, it's starting at Kaala Elementary, which is one thirty California. And it's going to head up California uh crossing Cam Highway, Kamehameha Highway, passing Waihua Town Center. crossing Cam Highway, Kamehameha Highway, passing Wahihua Town Center and turning left on Tukane Street and it'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have any other residents? So those were the two announcements. I knew, I'm sorry, Board Member Joe.
The I'm not sure how many in the community are aware or even care, but the Wahihua Public Library is closing in February. It's closing to make preparations for a reconstruction of a new facility, the Center for Workforce Excellence, which will be constructed on that site. The library plus the parking lot and the the school right next to it. The the project for the construction is expected to take two years roughly. It will start sometime after we vacate everything out of the library. The library will close sometime mid-February. We should have everything out of there by May and then we can turn it over to the contractors. Where the library is going to be located temporarily, the state librarian wants to keep that secret for the time being. I'm assuming because of rent negotiations or whatever. But I just wanted to make everybody aware that we're going to be going into a temporary location, which will be a lot smaller than the current library, which will, and this is for two years at least. This will affect the school children and teenagers that use the library very much. Can you hear me? Okay. Hey. I guess you can hear me. The also all the volunteers that support the library and work at the library. We have no idea what's going to happen with them, but just cease volunteering. We have a group called the Friends of the Wahihua Library, which I'm president. We work to support the library and help out on their events. And I just wanted to make sure that the community is aware that we'll be closing the library in February, which is very shortly. Thank you.
Do you want people to come help box up books?
I'm sure the state librarian says, sure, but for insurance purposes, I'm sure they're going to say no. If they ask for volunteers, I will put the word out.
Okay. Okay, Annie, that's it for board members and virtually Sylvia, you're okay? Okay, very good. Any other announcements for community announcement section of this? Yes, go ahead. Yeah, this is, we finish ours and then we open it to, yeah.
Hello, everybody. I figure it's time to introduce myself. My name is Scotty Wong. Hi, Jeannie, long time no see, T J, and the rest of the gang here. So I have the farm up here around Whitmore Village. It was given to me by A D C after a business plan and whatnot. And we've been doing a lot of cleanup, clearing the area, making it look good. We're getting good support from the community, businesses, companies, everybody pitching in, donating. Us as a Kanaka farmer, us as a Kanaka farmer, we don't, we don't got a lot of money like the million billion dollar seed companies. But we do have a lot of people that believe in our vision around Whitmore Village to clean this place up, clear the albezia, get the cars and the houseless, you know, out of the bushes and get that place cleaned for the A D C. That's our partnership with them and that's our partnership with this community that we're going to do. My concern is, is that I have a neighborhood board member and a state representative meeting with the A D C to stop me from doing my job. They protected a person that was trespassing. He was trespassed. He was living right outside of of the homes right up here on the corner of Whitmore. He attacked Cal Free. Let me talk. If you'd like to get the mic, come here. But he ended up attacking
Wait, Scotty, wait. Excuse me, whoever is out there, this is the last time I'm going to ask to please refrain. We're having a meeting and I'm just asking you politely to please allow us to continue with this meeting. Thank you.
So my concern was, is the person attacked and has a restraining order on one of your residents that pay rent and landowners right next to the state land. And ended up, I was told by A D C to stand off their meeting with two representatives. And I had to wait a week and a half while the residents of Whitmore on that land, right next to the land was saying, Scotty, what are you going to do? Can you help me? The guy keeps coming over. We're afraid. The whole neighborhood was afraid. So until the resident decided to sue, was going to put out a lawsuit, I told the A D C and ended up the A D C. So I think we gave him enough time. Take him off, Scotty. So we knocked on all the dog kennels, the poop, the smell, the dogs, he finally took it out last week. And but that's the concern I have is, is trying to protect the community, protect the state, protect the residents, and I'm being stopped. And this isn't hearsay. I got texts and emails from the A D C telling me who's meeting with them. My second concern.
Stop, just so that we're all clear, because some of us are hearing this for the first time and maybe not. But I'm just asking, this is a neighborhood board for community concerns. I just need you to kind of, you know, streamline that so that we can get, because we still have two other presentations to do, so I just need to know.
My concern is, is why is a neighborhood board member and a state rep preventing me as the farmer up here from doing my job? And the fact that I'm trying to help protect the community members, you know, from being assaulted, you know, but they're trying to keep them on the land. You know, why is that happening? And why is it that when I have motocross guys, dirt bikers who help me clean and do security on the other end, Saipan Road, the property, same people called, had A D C come back up and tell all the dirt bike community guys who were just cruising in the area after they cleaned up the area, did some riding, which I allow, I support, I support getting these guys off the street. Like how last week I came to you guys, supported getting the skateboarders a skate park. I gave them a place to stay. They're not doing anything, but they're just helping. Why was it that the A D C guy was called up at five o'clock or six o'clock in the afternoon to have all of them leave the property that I lease, that I have in my contract, that I can do what I want and have peace on that property to use it? And the dirt bikers all got kicked out. And then batteries were stolen from the same cars parked along Saipan, a military private road, which no neighborhood should be going down there. There's nothing for neighbors down there to go look at, except the land. Why is it that I'm being stopped from protecting the community and my property and all of the people who helped me? Their batteries and their equipment. That's my concern.
One last question and then I'm going to ask you for a little more information, but when you say why are you being stopped, who exactly is stopping you if you work with A D C and whoever else?
So Wendy, the executive director, on my emails, I get emails from her saying that T J Charisma and Amy Peruso is calling her complaining about what's happening like with the dirt bikers that were sitting inside my farm and also stopping me from taking a guy who's been trespassed by me with HPD and also has a restraining order on him from the house that's right next to my land.
Okay.
Why are they being protected to stay? And why is my guys who have a right to be on there getting kicked off by these individuals? That's my concern.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you, if you can, we got the gist of it. If you don't mind sitting late and we can talk after the meeting, but I also have to consult with our neighborhood commission office. Because if there's a conflict of interest, we cannot get involved. Do you understand? Because if you're, you named a board member and I'm not, I don't know what.
No, absolutely. But that's why I want to bring the concern tonight.
You have every right to. So if you are able and willing to wait after the meeting and I can consult with our neighborhood commission office, then we can at least have a conversation. Maybe we can, we can, you know, from the Hakaka, we can try and figure something else, maybe not so quickly. But if you don't mind doing that, Scotty, because you know me, I'm straight up, so I'm going to, yeah. Yeah, so if you don't mind taking a seat and I can bring up the next person who had a question.
Yeah, I don't mind. I just wanted to bring it to you guys because it's coming from state land going into city property.
Understood.
Is the issues.
Okay.
And with your guys' residence.
Understood. So everybody understands what just happened here, right? Okay, you got it. Okay, so in all fairness, I'm just being straight with you folks that there might be a conflict. So, okay. Wait.
My name is Warren. I'm with Shar Savior Church, Wahihua Christian Ministries Association and Malama Pono, volunteering for the volunteering for the middle school. And while I'm doing this, I'm watching cars coming down, or up California Avenue. The bike lane in between by Seven Eleven, right in between there where they made the edit with, for the path of traffic. The cars are actually being pushed into the bike lane. If the car stays in their lane, they're going into the bike lane and the outside lane of the bike lane, the line is almost invisible. Couple weeks ago, Kelly and I put in a request to have that repainted. I was wondering if we could follow up, if anybody could actually let them know also about the edit that was done. I failed to let them know that the cars are being pushed into the bike lane. And there's about five children that ride up there in the morning and it gets very close.
Okay, but you know what, that, I just want to dovetail off of that because it's not just the children, but there are, I've, I've seen people in wheelchairs, motorized wheelchairs, riding in the bike lane. And then cars have, so it's kind of a, it's a it's hazardous in many ways, but your question is relining the bike lanes on California Avenue?
Repainting the lines and they're going to have to edit how it runs right over there by Seven Eleven and American Savings.
Okay, so we can put that request in because that's a decent request and that is a safety issue, but we would have to put that request through the Department of Transportation Services.
I understand.
So we can work, we can at least make an attempt to get something.
So the request has been made by Kelly and I. It's just, I didn't include that edit.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Warren. Yes, June.
Madam Chair, didn't the mayor's representative about six months ago indicate that they already have a work order in to repaint?
They did, but apparently it hasn't moved yet. So that's why we're saying we can do a follow up. Thank you. Okay, anybody else with a community concern? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go back to our agenda. And right now we're going to do our second presentation, which is from the Department of Environmental Services. And they will be discussing to us the joyful, the joyful news of increased rates. So, but we trust. It'll be fair. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, Chair, Board Members and Audience, Community Members. My name is Roger Babcock. I'm the Director of the Department of Environmental Services for the city. Environmental Services takes care of wastewater and solid waste. Okay, sewage and refuse. So we collect the refuse from everybody, from all the residents, the gray, green, and blue carts and run the transfer stations, the convenience centers, H Power and the landfill. On the wastewater side, we operate the collection system, which is the pipes in the streets, the manholes. There's twenty one hundred miles of pipes all over the island. And then there's seventy two pump stations and nine wastewater treatment plants, including one in Wahihua, which is one of our nicer wastewater treatment plants in Wahihua next to the lake. So what I'm here to talk about is our plans to do adjustments to the sewer rates. And they're not going down. They're going to go up. And this is going to begin on July first of twenty twenty five. This is coming July. So the highlights are the sewer fees are going to increase each year over the next ten years. The fee structure is going to change. And I'll describe that more to allow customers to have a greater control over your bill. In other words, what that means is if you conserve water, conserve water, use less water, you can pay less on your sewer bill. Currently, the way the bill is structured, saving water has a pretty minimal impact on your sewer bill. But I'll go over that a little more. The other thing is we're introducing for the first time a customer assistance program for low income customers and we're going to, we're going to fund that at ten million dollars per year. And I'll explain a little bit more about that as we go along because affordability is a concern. So I kind of already mentioned what E N V does. I passed out a flyer to the board members. There's just a few, a few extras, but all this information, this flyer is available on the department's website. www.honolulu.gov slash E N V for environmental services. Okay, so you can navigate it. Actually, up at the top, there's an alert section at the very top of the webpage, which you can get directly to this flyer. So as I mentioned, we got the facilities that I mentioned and overall we treat a hundred million gallons of wastewater per day islandwide. And the thing that's different about environmental services, specifically the sewer fund, is that the sewer fund sewer operations are self-funded and funded only by the sewer fee. Almost all other services in the city, except for Board of Water Supply, are funded by property taxes. So all other departments, police, fire, and everything else, parks, everything else that we have, transportation is generally all funded by property tax as opposed to a dedicated fee. Whereas the sewer operations, those things I mentioned, have to be self-supporting from the sewer fee alone. So we have to pay for all of our operations through that fee. We're not allowed to get any funds from property tax. Similarly, the city other operations, the general fund, cannot take money from the sewer fund. So any money that goes into the sewer fund is used only for sewer. So what that means is when we do an analysis of operations current and what we have to do over the coming years, we have to set rates accordingly to be able to do everything that we are required to do. So, you know, the question is, why are the sewer fees going up? So you may not realize it, but your sewer fees haven't gone up for a long time. And that's because we do very efficient operations. And so the last time that sewer fees were increased was in twenty sixteen. So it's been eight years already and by the time the sewer fees go up again, it will have been nine years without any increase. And as everybody knows, the costs of everything have actually increased over the last nine years due to inflation, increases in electricity. We have a really big electricity bill, diesel fuel, labor costs, and everything else has gone up. But we've been able to keep the sewer fee unchanged for that time period. However, going forward, we're not able to do that anymore. And that includes operation and maintenance, as I mentioned, but we abbreviate that O and M. And the other one is capital improvement program or construction projects. And those involve lots of things, including meeting new regulatory requirements, upgrading and maintaining, rebuilding, aging infrastructure before it fails. And unfortunately, every once in a while, there are things that happen. We did have a forced main break in Eva Beach about a year and a half ago, which was, you know, very disruptive for that, for that community. So we do have to invest a lot of money to prevent those things from happening. And even yet, sometimes they will still unfortunately happen. And a big thing that we have to do is called a consent decree. So in the year two thousand and ten, twenty ten, the city entered into a an agreement with the U S Department of Justice in federal court, Department of Justice, the EPA, State Department of Health, and several litigants that were environmental groups that had sued the city. So the city had many years of violations because they had disagreements with the EPA and the Department of Health, many millions of dollars in fines, as well as these lawsuits. And so they entered into this court situation called a consent decree, which wiped away all the fines and settled all the lawsuits. And in doing that, the city agreed to do certain things. So again, that was in twenty ten. There's three parts of that thing called the consent decree. The first part was to eliminate sewer overflows from the collection system. Those are called S S O, sanitary sewer overflows. So there was a series of a hundred and fifty approximately specific projects that the city agreed to do. Putting in backup forest mazes, replacing, upgrading the sewer system and a bunch of pump stations. And that, those projects were one point four billion dollars. And the consent decree said you have ten years to do those projects and you need to do those first because sewer overflows are bad. That sewage spilling on the ground. So that was completed on time and on budget. The second part was to upgrade the Hona Uli Uli wastewater treatment plant in Eva Beach. The consent decree gave until twenty twenty four, June first of this year. And the project was completed a little bit early, earlier in twenty twenty four and is now operating. And that part of the consent decree has also been settled. The third part is to upgrade the Sand Island Wastewater Treatment The third part is to upgrade the Sand Island wastewater treatment plant, which is the largest treatment plant in the system. And that was given 25 years from the start of the consent decree, from 2010 to 2035. And that's the remaining piece that we have to finish. And unfortunately, that's a very expensive project. We broke it up into two phases. One of the phases, the first phase of that project is under construction now. It'll be finished in 2026. It's been under construction for a couple of years already. It's about a little more than half done. And so that project will be finished, but that's only about a quarter of the capacity of the treatment plant. The rest of it is Phase 2, which is in design now, needs to start construction in 2029 and be finished in 2035. But that's a very expensive project. It's about a $2 billion project. Here it says 1.8 billion. So that's a big number. But that's not the only project. So if we take all the projects that we have to do to do all those other things that I mentioned, it's over $10 billion that we need to spend between 2025 and 2040. So we have a lot of work that we have to do. So because of that, we have to raise the, raise the sewer fees. So I kind of mentioned many of the things that we have to do with that money. We gotta finish the 2010 consent decree. I want to emphasize, we don't have a choice on that. It's a court decision. We can't go back to the judge and say, we don't want to do this. It was a settlement and all the litigants would have to agree. We already went back to the EPA and the Department of Health two years ago and petitioned to be able to reopen it. And they said no. And the other litigants wouldn't want to do that either. So the federal judge won't look for that. But we do have to pay for the increasing operation and maintenance costs, replacing aging infrastructure, which I mentioned. We have new infrastructure we need for regulatory requirements like disinfection, for example, at Hona Uli Uli and Kalua. And we're also modernizing equipment to be more efficient and save money on electricity. So what, how much is the bill gonna go up? Well, it's in the flyer. It needs to go up quite a bit. So beginning next year, it needs to go up 9% per year for several years, six years in a row. And then in the out years, years seven, eight, nine and 10, it goes up 8, 7, 6 and 5%. So those are the rates that we are, that we need and that we will be presenting to City Council in the November meeting, which is November 7th. After that, council will refer it to committees for hearings. And ultimately, the council to approve something like this, a change in ordinance, because sewer fees are in ordinance. And it has a schedule, the last one showed from 2010 through 2016. And then it's been no change since then. So we put in a new table, which is the 10 years through 2034. It's actually approved by council, but it's our sewer ordinance. And there will be hearings then in November, Budget Committee and Public Infrastructure and Technology Committee. Those will be all public meetings. And then it will go back to council in December for the December council meeting. And then it has to go also to the January council meeting. So there'll be lots of hearings at City Hall on this, on these rate increases. The, so the average person on Oahu, so the sewer bill is based on two components. There's a flat fee, which is a constant amount every month, or called a base charge. And then there's a volumetric charge. So the volumetric charge is based on the volume of wastewater that you create. And so it's based on your water bill. So Board of Water Supply, we use their data for the water meter. And then we calculate a charge partly based on that. Currently, the base charge, same since 2016, is $77.55 for a single-family residence. And then the volumetric charge, which is per 1,000 gallons of water used, is $4.63. So most people, the average bill, sorry, I'm taking a long time, but I can stop any time and take questions. But currently, the average person uses 9,000 gallons a month. That's the average for all people. And then you get a 20% credit for irrigation. So we take off 20%, for that's for watering your grass. And then the 80% is considered sewage and your charge is based on that. And you times eight, times, or whatever the number is, it's actually 7,200 gallons, times $4.62 is about, is about $33. So typical bill is $110 right now for a single-family residence. If you use less water, you pay less. So quickly, the thing I talked about, about changing the fee structure, is that that $77 per month is not going to increase for several years. It's gonna stay the same, but the charge per 1,000 gallons is gonna increase to make up for the rate increases that I just mentioned. And so all the rate increase in the first four years is all in the volumetric charge. So basically, your monthly fee of, flat fee would be $77. So if you use less water, you can greatly impact your bill. Whereas right now, you're only working with that $33. So that's what I mean by changing the structure. Hopefully, that's not too complicated. I know it is kind of complicated. But that is to allow better control of your bill and address affordability. So it's to promote water conservation, exactly like the water bill does. So the water bill has a tiered structure. The more water you use, the higher you pay. So basically, we're getting more towards that with sewer also. So if you conserve water, you save on your water bill and your sewer bill over time. The other, the last thing is the customer assistance program. And so we realize some folks will have a hard time with these increases. So as I mentioned, we're dedicating $10 million to a new customer assistance program. It'll be based on income, family income and comparison to the area median income. So right now, we're planning on using the same formula as the city's rental utility and utility relief program, which has been in effect for a number of years. Tens of thousands of folks have benefited from that program. It's based on 80% of the area median income to qualify, so 80% or less. And we're planning to do basically a program that's modeled after their program. And we're estimating about $20 to $25 credit initially on the base charge for that program. And somewhere between like 35,000, 40,000 homes, at least, we estimate would qualify for that, for that fee reduction. So that is, I want to mention those things. This is, we're doing a press release, press conference Wednesday morning with mayor. We're announcing this to the general public, so you're hearing about it first here in Wauhau. And then there will be more media events and stuff after that. So sorry I talked so long. It's kind of a complicated issue, but if you, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Director. And everyone, it's a lot of information too. It is a lot. But we did ask, you know, Director to come and come to Wauhau first because we can always ask him to come back if we have, we need clarification, which I know I will need. But just really quickly, before I open it up, Phase 1, you guys were on time, right? 10 years, 1.4 billion. Where did that money come from to pay for that?
Yeah, so that money, so all of our, so you're asking where the 1.4 billion came from? So we collect sewer fees and sewer fees pay for, so that's cash essentially. So we have a cash account and we have a bond fund account. So cash comes in and we have to pay operation and maintenance costs with that. That means wages and salary and electricity and all that kind of stuff, bills that we have. For construction projects, we use sewer bonds. So municipal tax-free bonds that the city sells. They're specifically for the sewer fund. The city also sells general obligation bonds for all the rest of the capital projects that the city does. For example, building a pool or paving the roads or building, you know, any other structure or facility in the city or a new police academy or whatever. Those are construction projects that are paid for with general obligation bonds. So we have separate sewer bonds that we sell. So construction projects are almost, they're partly paid for with cash, but only about 20% of it is cash. Most of it is sewer bonds. So we issue debt every year to pay for our capital projects. So the 1.4 billion was mostly paid for with bond, tax-free general obligation bonds. We pay about 4% interest, depends on the market at the time, and those are paid off over 30 years. And so we have to have a certain amount of cash in order to back all of the bonds, just like the city does with general obligation bonds. They have to have some cash in order to, essentially collateral for the bonds. So all the rest of this basically would also be funded with bonds. So the sewer fees then, about half of what comes in as a sewer fee is used to pay for operation and maintenance cash. The other half is used to pay off bonds, existing debt that we have, about 50/50.
Okay, thank you. I just needed that clarification. And one last question, I'm opening, Coricho, is I think it would be really helpful if at the point that you're able to provide us the information, if anyone needs to apply for rental assistance or housing assistance, because in Wauhau, we do have families that are living in apartments. And I'm sure if the sewage rates go up, rent is gonna go up and et cetera, et cetera. So we greatly want to take care of our community. So if you can keep us in the loop on that, on when we can get that information out so that no one is harmed or no family is harmed in Wauhau and Whitmore, yeah? Okay, thank you. And then Joe has a question for you.
Yeah, I just want to clearly understand the consent decree response. The city's response to this is they're dumping it all on you, right? Environmental Services is, is, okay.
Yep.
And the work that's needed to comply with the consent decree, that work is being paid for with bonds?
Correct.
The bonds are then being paid off over 30 years with the sewer fees?
With cash, yeah.
Okay, so the purpose of raising the sewer fees is because we've used a lot more bonds than we expected or what?
Well, because we have these expensive projects, we have to issue a lot more bonds. So normally, we issue, like this year, we issue maybe about $300 million or we do $300 million to $400 million of work. And that continues. We still have to keep doing that. But we have this one really big project, which is almost $2 billion. And so we got to issue a whole bunch of debt in order to get that project done because you can't do it with cash. We can't somehow bring in an extra $2 billion in sewer fees because sewer fees only bring in about $400 million a year and are 450. So you'd have to triple the sewer fees in order to bring in enough money to pay cash for the projects.
So the purpose of going to the City Council then is approval of the plan to purchase more, to sell more bonds?
Essentially, yes. Yep.
Hi, this might be an obvious question, but were there other revenue streams considered besides raising fees on us?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So it was whether there's other revenue streams. And so we have some other fees. So new connections, new developments have to pay a connection fee, wastewater system facility charge. And those are pretty substantial, but they're one-time. And so we do collect millions of dollars of that every year. But the other main sort of outside source that we get is federal funds. So we get federal funds from the EPA and what's called a state revolving fund, Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And there's also, and Board of Water Supply also accesses some funds through their other counties. It's a state fund, so it's also other counties, so we compete for that funds. But recently, in the past six to 10 years, we get about $55 million a year from that source. So it's pretty substantial. And yeah, so that's our, that's our main other sort of outside source.
Just an add-on. So I mean, each of us have, sorry, June, each of us have our households, but I think that there's some businesses that use way more, like, because they're military or industrial zones. How are they being charged?
Yeah, so how about military and industrial? Yeah, so the numbers I gave really are for a single-family residential, like the typical bill. But non-residential pays the same, essentially the same rate, the same rate charge. Basically, if you're non-residential, like you're a restaurant, you're basically assigned a certain number of equivalent units. So basically, essentially on your water use. So it's, they're paying, but then, so each single-family home is one, it's called one unit, an equivalent single-family dwelling unit, one, a single-family house. But if you're a restaurant, you might be assigned 25. And so then you're paying 25 times the flat rate plus the volumetric rate, the same as a resident. So same with industry, hotels, hotels, if there's 450 rooms, they got 450 times the base rate plus the volumetric rate. And some hotels use 2 or 3 million gallons a month, so they have really, really large bills. So everybody's paying, everybody's paying, you know, their fair share in terms of residential, non-residential. So military, so military bases, folks who live on base, they have their own treatment plant. So Schofield's got a treatment plant, Marine Corps Base has got a treatment plant, Navy's got a treatment plant. So people who live on base and those operations are treated, you know, on their own. But quite a few personnel live off-base. And so those folks are connected to our system and they're paying the same rate as anybody else.
Yeah, that's why I asked about apartments, because, yeah.
I guess you're aware that the city planned to increase the amount of accessory dwellings, right? So how would that affect this plan?
Yep, thanks. Good question. So accessory dwelling units are charged an additional unit. So if you have a single-family dwelling and then you add an accessory dwelling unit onto it, currently, you pay now two ESDUs. So you would pay double the flat, the base charge and then the water use. Not double the water use, just the total water use for the, for the unit, for the two units together. We're actually proposing in this, we did some analysis and found that accessory dwelling units are not using twice, you know, doubling the amount of water. So we're actually proposing in the revised ordinance that it be a half. So it would be, if you had a regular unit plus an accessory dwelling, you'd pay one and a half times the base charge and then, of course, the volumetric charge. So, yeah, thanks.
I'd like to follow up the Chair's question. For the assistance in, for the financial assistance, is that gonna be online or is that, you know, a paper thing?
For the assistance, assistance program, yeah. Yeah, so we're still, you know, we're still kind of working that out. We're, again, we're probably gonna, we're mostly modeling it after the RURP. And what they did is they contracted with Catholic Charities and CNHA. Yeah, and so we are, we put in a budget to hire a consultant contractor. And so then they essentially do everything. They do all the outreach, they help people fill out the paperwork and did, and processed everything. And then just sent to, sent to us and say, these are the people who get, you know, get the credit. And then we would just adjust the bills accordingly.
So you put this in the water bill? So there is a lot of seniors that might not hear about it. That's my concern.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. So of course, we will do a lot of outreach. I think that once people hear about this, these increases, there's gonna be a lot of interest. And we will always be talking about this program and trying to get people to sign up for it. And what we found is that, what the city found was by using the nonprofit agencies, they were able to get a lot more penetration and a lot more people to, you know, to sign up and distribute the funds. That would be, that's our goal, is to get the funds out to the people, to the people who need it. And then in the, in upcoming years, if we need to adjust the size of the program, we can always, we can always do that. It's, and that would be, that would be our intention, so.
Thank you, Director. I'm gonna open it to the community.
Chair Shikawa, excuse me, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So this is a technical question. You can come back. But with regard to the customer assistance program, if you have a kupuna that own their own house and are, meet the income qualifications, will there be a cap on asset limit, on assets? So if they own their own house, you get what I'm saying, yeah? Because most of the kupuna do not qualify for those programs under the RURP because of the fact that they own, they have an asset that exceeds $2,000, similar to what the Medicaid requirements are.
Oh, you know, TJ, I don't know about that, so we'll have to, yes, I'll have to get back to you. So I mean, certainly, that would not be our intention. The intention would be that those qualify based on income regardless of assets. That would be the test that we want to use. So I, I'm not sure about that, so we'll have to definitely look into that.
Great. Anything you can share so that we can prepare? Because July 1st, 2025 will come around before we know it. Thank you. Appreciate all the information.
Thank you, TJ, and thank you, Director. I'm gonna open it up to the community. Any questions for? Any questions for Director on this proposal? Yes, if you can, can you go up and introduce yourself? Thank you. And then, after this, I'm going to go to our board member Dean.
You state single-family residents. What does that consist? Both of our local families here, it's our grandparents, it's us as parents, it's also our children and our grandchildren. So, when we put all our incomes together, we will never qualify for any type of assistance. But we're all living in one type of unit. So, we are basically just thrown out and charged all of these rates, never, you know, looked at as a whole. We can't afford to all live apart, because we all live together. So, maybe you guys can, you know, assume that maybe after a certain amount of people or look into those kind of individuals, that all our incomes together may exceed your, you know, rate, which is zero, according to what we can live in. But we can't live apart, you know? So, now we're paying double, and we use more water, because there's eight of us living in a household. That's not a single-family residence that you guys go up. Where is your single-family residence bottom line? Four people? Six people? Eight people? Ten people in my household? Because all my family live in one household. So, that's something that you guys need to consider, especially in our local communities. You know, other communities, maybe not.
Wait, what was your name again? What was your name? Huzana, I just wanted to say thank you, because that's what I was raising about earlier, because it's not just the number of the people. It could be, you could have only two people, but if they water the yard all day long, run, wash their car, everybody uses water differently. So, that's, we, you know, and that's why, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, a lot of people, and our community, and that is why I asked Director to come here first, because it gives us time to ask him to come back again, because we have until July, and whether we participate at city council or not, we have time as a community to think about what we can do. But we also know that, that the improvements to the sewer system needs to be done. We know that there's a, you know, there's a reason for that, and we know that it's billion, two billion, so, correct. Right. And that, yeah. And that's why I brought it up, right? Yeah. Correct. Yeah. Correct. Right, right, yeah. Thank you very much. And again, that, yeah, very good. Okay, and?
Aloha, my name is Matthew Koopie. As a linear descendant to all the king and queens, I'm here to protect all crown and government land and help the, help the community. And we traveled a lot of islands. And when you talk about the sewage, don't forget the one seven four dash one oh one C. To the customary rights seventeen seventy-eight, the native people have rights to their water. You shouldn't be paying for their water. So, be very careful how you're charging the community. Yeah? All this cooperation, they're coming out from different countries, taking jobs from native people. And we had the COVID, the pandemic, a lot of people lost their jobs. They don't have their jobs. People today, yeah? They lost their businesses. But they failed to double-check their insurance, that what they paid for their job, their insurance should pay the compensation back. And the United States President made it to all men, that they will pay the difference to all you native. So, be very careful how you guys coming out. And the state on the five oh one C, three and four, that is a nonprofit. And that is where coming from, Hawaiian homes. Just remember these, you guys are beneficiaries. You guys not commoners. We are one blood, one nation in Hawaii. Aloha.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'm going to, oh, you want to go up? Go ahead.
Sharkahumoku, I just have one more question. Is any of the fees that you're collecting from your water or your sewers leaving Hawaii?
Yeah, so thanks, thanks for that question. So, we only do sewer, Border Water Supply does water. But the, the fees, as I mentioned, are really two things. One is operation and maintenance, so that's paying. You know, we got twelve hundred people work for us. We operate the treatment plants, most of them twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So, we got people on three shifts. So, a lot of it is salary and wages. Electricity, you know, that's going to Pico. We buy a lot of diesel fuel, because we got generators and we got a lot of trucks and the sewer pumping trucks and stuff that come out to do trouble calls. And then, but I guess, you know, the half of the money is going to interest payments on the debt. And so, that's all the people who own bonds. And there are people all over the country. And so, you can buy them too, municipal bonds. Bank of Hawaii and First Hawaiian Bank buy a lot of our bonds. They hold a lot of our debt, because they want to invest in the community. And, but otherwise, it's retirement funds and stuff like that own a lot of government municipal bonds, just like they own treasury, you know, T-bills and stuff like that. But otherwise, we're not like paying, you know, paying out really. Most of our construction projects are all local construction companies. So, again, that's workers, employees, their wages, and all the associated businesses and stuff associated with supplying the supplies and stuff, yeah? Hopefully, that.
So, when you refer to country, are you talking about our country of Hawaii, or are you talking about the United States?
So, yeah, so basically, most of it is staying on island. So, I guess you can call it whatever it is you want to call it. So, most of it is staying in Hawaii, specifically Oahu, I would say, yeah. And then, you know, the other question was really good about qualifying for the assistance program. It's really challenging, and we're up to that challenge, to try and figure out how we can get people who need it to benefit. And, but, you know, that's, that's on us to figure that out. But we get it, we're going to try, got to try to figure that out.
Yeah. And so. And again, that's why I brought it up, because it's, we have to start working on that, so we can help. And after Senator, then I have two hands up there.
Question for you is that, he's talking about the wages, yeah? So, everybody over here, you guys got to understand, this is the projection that they're projecting. Not what we're going to tell the city council that we want as people. We cannot afford the nine percent. So, what is the equi-medium? What is the change? They're telling us what they want. We need to tell the elected officials and government people, like the city council, what we want, because we don't want to increase that high. It's too high. Two thousand and ten, before this whole decree came, he was not even there. They promised the people that we was going to have an outfall at the sewer. I used to work for Parsons at the time, when we were doing the sewer lining of a beach. They promised that we was going to have an outfall at every house, to know how much water or how much waste goes into the sewer. That was, that was gone. We're making all of these improvements for wages and, and see, and all these improvements in the sewer, because we need them, we all who need them. But nobody told them the billions and billions of dollars of, but Honolulu treatment plant. Everybody was grumbling about rail, but nobody was grumbling about all the billions of dollars sent island, and Honolulu is. See the big building over there looking nice? Question is, how come we're not investing in our people that's using the sewer, who water the yard, which a lot of people in Oahu does, getting charged, even though you guys get twenty percent? That's nothing. That's nothing. Especially when you guys talk about the seniors. Seniors flush the toilet two times a day, and they're getting charged with big dollars. What I'm saying is, our seniors also should have a waiver. As legislators, I think we need to go in a square building and make decisions that anybody on fixed income, sixty-five, whatever they call senior citizen today, I'm fifty-seven, so I'm still young, but whatever is fifty-sixty, whatever, we should have a waiver. Neighbor islands have trash, certain utilities is waiting. How come the largest island, they get the most people, cannot give waivers? Small islands like Maui, Kilo, Hawaii, they get waivers for their seniors. The only waivers we get is when they wave to us, when we're going over there paying our bill. That's the only thing we get. So, you know, I love you, brother.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Senator. So, first, the, there's all different kinds of assistance programs that can happen, and some cities do have a senior discount. But they also have an income limitation on that, too. We thought about that. But right now, we're going to do the model of the rental and utility relief program, which is based on area media, area median income, as at least what we propose to do now. That can be modified, you know, later as we, as we go along. With respect to the outfall, I don't remember what you're, what you're talking about, but with the waivers, you're, the, the bigger your assistance program is, then the more other people's rates got to go up, right? So, we have a fixed amount of revenue requirement to do our projects, and so, we have to bring in that amount. So, if we get some people free, then the other people that are not free got to pay more to cover the people that are free, because you still need the same amount of income, if you get my drift, so.
Okay, Senator, if you can hold on, because I did say earlier, I had two people waiting all this time. So, we have two people, board member Dean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Director. A couple of things. First of all, section eight clientele, they already get vouchers that cover the majority of their utilities, or the landlord gets the voucher, and it's written in their contract that they have to pay out of the section, away from section eight, the utilities of that rental. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, the real property office has a couple of discounts that they offer to, first, native Hawaiians, and second, people with disability. You folks might want to look at that to see what, how and what they manage those discounts that are applied to the real property tax. I know as a native Hawaiian, I do get a tax here at my, my home, because of that law that was enacted. And then, the second one, because my wife is a stroke victim. So, it does help us out on the real property tax, big time. You might just want to look at that and adopt that as part of the policy to, to give, especially your, you know, the native Hawaiian, the host people of the island, it would be most beneficial. All right, sir? Thank you. Good luck. God bless.
Yep, thank you for that question.
Thank you. At this point, is that Ali, or is it Ali? Ali, are you there?
Aloha, I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you have a question for Director?
Uh, yes, you know, it was, it's just what that gentleman had said earlier about being careful, because accountability of unlawful things is serious. You know, we want to work together in unification, because Hawaii is important to people. We want to make sure that water is automatic. Like the gentleman said, we should not be paying for any water. The water should automatically be given and helped the people naturally. But we understand there's, you got to pay for services and stuff like that, we do. But at the same time, we have to always be careful when we're talking about policies and politics here in Hawaii. We have to understand that and be open-minded about it, that it's still occupation, we still talking about royal crown lands, we're still talking about positive movement, moving forward. If we're moving forward as a Kanaka people, we cannot be greedy with each other. And this, especially Hawaii, is so important for everyone, of every color, of every race. And we already know in Hawaii, we get planning politics, we get mean-crying, underground politics, like Brother Dean said, we all do get attacked. We get attacked a lot. And me, I'm from that community. I'm from there, on and raised. Know the pineapple field real good, the red dirt over there. Get ancestors generational working over there. So, we know of this place over there and how important this Pico area is of Hawaii. We understand that the middle and the rain, the rain give everything, you can make water catchment over here, and it's still work. So, accountability and just awareness, just to be aware, that that gentleman was correct. We are living in Hawaii te, iau puni e Hawaii te, and we cannot ever forget that. Because if we forget that, we're part of the genocide problem as well. Mahalo nui, my name Alii Kawai. Aloha.
Aloha. Well, well done and well said, Ali. Thank you. At this point, Director, and every Senator, if you don't mind, we are almost at quarter to nine, and we have our elected officials right now, so we can get through our elected officials, and we can come back to, to any other comments. So, at this time, Mayor's Representative Kevin Auger is not, he is traveling at a conference. So, moving on to council member Matt.
Chair, I just want to say thank you very much, and everybody. And I'll come back anytime you invite us to, as we go, as we go through this, go through this process.
Okay, and can we give Director a round of, for coming to us first? Drive home safely. Thank you. Council member Matt Wire, or Kelly, if you're around? Kelly, are you up? Hi, Kelly. From council member's office, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Kelly Anaya from Council Member Matt Wire's office. Just a few things, wanted to highlight. Council member was proud to participate in the Lelehua Homecoming Parade last week. Couple of us did attend with council member as well, and we had a great time. He wanted to thank the city departments, as well as the state Department of Transportation, for all the help and support that they provided to make this parade happen. I also wanted to, or what council member wanted to remind everyone about the final community meeting tomorrow night for the district park. I believe it was promoted more for the skate improvements, but I think they're going to morph it into like just general park improvements. So, the meeting is again tomorrow at the Haleho Okepa Building at six PM at the Oahu District Park. And council member would like to thank the DPR staff for organizing this series of community meetings and to get the community engaged with the upcoming plans for the park. Couple legislative updates. Council member wanted to remind everyone that bills require three readings at full council, and once passed, it can be sent to the mayor for signing into law. A few bills that were passed, Bill forty, which relates to the self-certification for solar permits, passed third reading and was sent to the mayor for signature. This bill will simplify the process to install rooftop solar and reduce, hopefully reduce the backlog at DPP. Bill twenty-two, which legalizes certain fireworks, passed third reading against council members, no vote. Council members' main concern with the measure was the potential risk for wildfires, as well as HFD's presentation on data, excuse me, data on the human injury and risks of fire. Resolution twenty-four two one three provides recycling receptacles at city parks and recreational facilities, passed out of council and has been adopted. Council member would like to thank the Honolulu Youth Commission for spearheading this measure. Bill fifty-two, regulating e-bikes, passed second reading at full council and is going to be discussed in the Transportation Committee. Bill forty-six, regarding the empty homes tax, is scheduled for Budget Committee. There's no Budget Committee this month, though, so it'll be up for hearing most likely in November. So, please continue to provide your feedback to our office. That way, you know, it still can adjust to serve the community's needs. And lastly, Bill forty-seven, I'm sorry, Bill forty-seven, the Ina Kapuna Tax Relief, as well as Bill forty-five, which is the low-income tax credit, passed second reading at full council and is now with Budget Committee as well. A couple of updates from, let's see, from last month. Board member Francher, I'm sure he's already aware, but the library door has been replaced. So, I just wanted to mahalo David Cho, David Cho from Senator Dela Cruz's office for following up on that. Also, earlier this evening, I believe Alicia mentioned about the Mango Street homeless. The reason it took a while for that situation to get resolved is because Mango Street is private property, and HPD needed the property owner's permission to do the trespass. Oh, and then, I'm sorry, Board Member Charisma, sorry, I couldn't get back to you earlier, I was out in the district today, but your request regarding the Oahu Transit Clock, I did submit a request back in June, you know, requesting the clock be fixed, but I haven't heard back from them. Last month, I submitted a request for a status update, and as of today, I still have not heard back from the department. A few years ago, I was told that because the clock is old and outdated, it's hard to obtain parts. But I'm not sure if that's the same situation that we're having now. So, as soon as I hear anything, I'll let you guys know. That's it for me. If anyone has any questions for a council member, I can take them back.
Thank you, Kelly. Board members, any questions for council member? Just go ahead, TJ.
Just a comment. Thank you, Kelly. My mahalo to Council Member Wire. There are community members online that actually posed that question to Um, there are community members online that actually posed that question to me about the repair of the clock. So I'm sure they are very happy to know that it has not fallen off the radar. So any further updates you can provide would be fabulous. Thank you again for all your hard work.
No problem, thank you for your support.
Thank you, and Board Members, virtually, any questions, um, Dean or Sylvia?
Uh, hi Kelly.
Hi.
I want to bring to your attention the roller gate, uh, that secures the driveway to the upper deck parking lot, uh, has been shut down and is, um, the driveway's blocked off now, so I checked with the guards. He had related that the gate is broken, can you get a timeline on the repairs on that?
Okay.
Because now with the construction parking over there, Queens Hospital getting more, uh, employees up there, uh, Center Street's becoming really busy again. And right now, your transit people who parked at the center or at the transit center aren't able to go up to, uh, to the parking lots upstairs, yeah?
No problem, thank you for letting me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Dean, Sylvia, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any, any questions for, uh, from the community, I'm sorry? Okay, hearing none, gonna move on to Senator Dela Cruz's office, uh, I'm sorry, Governor Green's office. Is Rosemary, oh, Rosemary, yes, thank you.
Uh, hi Rosemary Bernardo, uh, I brought some copies of the Governor's Newsletter right there, if anybody would like to take a copy.
Hi, can you hear me better? Awesome, okay, um, um.
Some, wanted to address some concerns that were raised at the previous neighborhood beauty, neighborhood board meeting, uh, some damage reported at the Wahiwa Public Library, uh, that has been brought to the attention of the Office for the Hawaii State Public Library System, which they're looking into that matter. Um, also, what was asked before was how will votes be validated for this upcoming election? And, um, I've been, I contacted the Office of Elections and they mentioned that the Office compares the signature on the ballot return envelope on the voter registration records. And typically that comes from someone's driver's license or state ID or an original voter application. And once that process is, once that process occurs, then the ballot moves forward with the counting process. And, uh, if the vote can't be validated, the person who registered to vote will be contacted. Um, if a person who mailed in their ballot and that individual attempted to vote in person, that individual will not be permitted to do so and vice versa. Uh, for more information on that, the public may visit the Office of Elections webpage, And I'll be happy to take any questions and concerns back.
Thank you, as we, um, you had a question?
Yeah.
In regards to the signature validation, so they literally look at every ballot and compare the signatures, if an individual does add, is this by machine or how is this done? I mean, I just am kinda taken back that they'd look at every single one that comes in.
I'll take that back, on how that's vetted.
Okay, thank you, any other questions for the Governor's Office? And virtually, Dean?
Good evening, thank you for coming, uh, two questions. H-two freeway going north and southbound, uh, since its inception, we were told that, um, highway was gonna be putting in traffic, electronic traffic advisory signs. Right now, all I've been seeing is only the improvements on H-one, uh, from town to, out to Makakilo. Uh, H-three has them, everybody but us, you know, we don't have any advisory signs of, um, traffic being snarled or, or use alternate routes. I think that would be a, a big help to us going north, especially going into town in the morning, this is a major tie-up, you know? Uh, but right now, uh, if you could just get a timeline from DOT, uh, what is there expected, uh, when are they expected to put up some electric, uh, electronic traffic advisory signs on H-two in both directions, I appreciate that. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to address was, uh, the enforcement for, um, passenger motor vehicles is gonna be moving over to the Department of Transportation also at the, as of January one. Uh, does DOT plan to build any weigh stations along H-one corridor, especially out in the country where there's room for that? Uh, right now, there's only one weigh station that the state operates, and that's at Sand Island. You know, this, uh, is gonna really improve the enforcement action for DOT and the state's budget. Bringing a lot of good money, cuz I know for a fact that, uh, I see it on the mainland a lot. So if you could just find out, what is their intent on, are they gonna build any more weigh stations along Kuniya to Makakilo where there's open space for that type of thing?
Along Kuniya, yeah.
Well, it's H-one between Kuniya and Makakilo, weigh stations for the passenger, commercial vehicles.
I'll take that back.
Thank you.
Thank you Dean, any other questions virtually? Oh, I'm sorry, wait, no, okay, TJ?
Uh, just a suggestion, because by the time we have our next neighborhood board meeting, the elections will be about a weekend, a day or so over, so if you have questions, um, especially, uh, Board Member Michelle, why don't, and I, I don't have anything to do with it, but my suggestion would be to call the Office of Elections and ask them exactly what she asked, how are the signatures being validated? Will they be validated one at a time, will there be a random sampling done, but exactly what the procedure is? Because, but like I said, by the time we have our next board meeting, elections will be done. So I would encourage you, if you have any questions about that, to please reach out to the Office of Elections. And I'm not sure, Rosemary, if you have the.
Have the number, yeah.
If you could share it once again.
Yes, the Office of Elections phone number, and, uh, yes, they said call anytime for any questions, it's eight zero eight four five three eight six eight three.
Thank you TJ, thank you Rosemary, any other questions from the community for the Governor's Office? Okay, thank you Rosemary, and next we look for, uh, David Cho from Senator Dela Cruz's office.
Hi there, good evening, uh, this is actually, uh, Malakai, Kai, Kai Burrows, uh, from Senator Dela Cruz's office. Um, so just got a few updates, then, um, a couple of follow-ups, uh, questions that were asked to, um, our representative who was at the last month's meeting, um, but, uh, one update I wanna share, um, there was a community event, um, not this past weekend, the weekend before, at Lake Wilson, uh, day at Lake Wilson, um, last Saturday, a Saturday before last. Um, so this was an event at the, at the lake, at the rec park, um, there were some boat rides, uh, educational activities for, for kids. Um, there was some genki ball making, so those are those balls they put in the alaway, I don't know if anyone's familiar to, try to clear up the bacteria. Um, and just kind of a educational event, um, so people can learn about the planned up, uh, upgrades and improvements and the cleaning that's gonna happen at the, at the lake, um, that's planned, um, by the state. Um, a couple of things they're gonna put in there, some new comfort stations or restrooms, uh, some more paths, uh, community amphitheater and some more fishing platforms, um, and that's just kinda stage one for some more upgrades and improvements to the area. Uh, there is a Channel Two story, uh, I think you can find it on that website, a couple of interviews, uh, Senator gave an interview and some info on, uh, future plans for the area. Um, a follow-up from last meeting, I think there was some questions asked about that Mango Street property. Um, and we don't have too many updates from, I think, um, maybe it was August or July that I reported, um, that we've been in communication with DAGs, uh, Department of Accounting and General Services, um, about kind of their options to either have the property sold to a new owner, um, as the current owner, uh, basically went bankrupt. Um, and so it's kind of difficult, um, getting the property back because they owe money to, like, the banks and stuff that they borrowed money from, so. Um, state looking to either acquire after the debts are paid, um, or force the landowner to sell. So that's kinda where we're at with that. Um, few, few people mentioned the Wahiwa Library Door, I feel, I, I think was, uh, addressed already. Uh, I think that was fixed on the eighth of October. Um, and then the Wahiwa Library was also mentioned, um, I believe, uh, Board Member, uh, Joe Francher touched on that. Uh, we've been in contact with libraries, um, to try to get a timeline out of them, see what their plans are for, uh, relocation timeline and then timeline for the temporary location. Um, so hopefully they, you know, they come out with, uh, some details for the community, so, um, people can find out, you know, when services will be stopped, that the current opened up at the temporary and, and then starting at the new location, which will be at the Center for Workforce Excellence, so our office and, uh, Senator has sent some letters to the library to try to get that information out to the community. Um, also, I think there was a question or two about the pedestrian bridge, uh, that would be connecting Wahiwa and Whitmore Village. Um, that's gonna be a project, um, under DOT, we'll be building the bridge, um, and they'll be transferring the bridge, um, over to the city. Um, so the city will maintain the bridge, and I think the specific question was about the lights on the bridge, if I'm correct. Um, so there will be lights on the bridge confirmed, um, any other updates or questions? Um, I can try to answer those about the bridge, but there will be lights on the bridge. Uh, we have asked, uh, DOT for some more info on that bridge, um, so when they get back to us, I'll, I'll report back with the next board meeting. Um, and then last thing, uh, on the topic of the ADC land being leased, um, by Scotty Wong that was talked about at the beginning of the board meeting, um, ADC does have on their next agenda, which is on October twenty-fourth, they have an informational item to discuss, you know, those activities, uh, that happened, uh, last weekend. Um, just informational items, I don't know what exactly they're gonna determine about, you know, disciplinary actions or what actions they're gonna take, but, um, that is on their agenda, ten twenty-four. Um, that's about it for me, if anyone has questions, I'm ready to answer.
I do, hi Malakai, this is Jeannie calling, um, this is Jeannie, I just, I just have two, I just have two follow-up questions for you, I mean, uh, is that when we asked about the bridge, we asked about lights and security, if there would be, to be safe. So if they're looking at, there are gonna be lights, can you find out if they're gonna provide security? Because if people are gonna be walking over that bridge at night, cuz the, the intent was people can go to work and come back, and if you're walking across that bridge at ten, at, at ten o'clock at night or whatever time, is there gonna be security so people are safe? So that's what we had asked previously.
Yeah, I can follow up on that, um, yeah, I'll see, we've been talking about, talking to the Department of Law Enforcement about kind of their presence in the area and if there's potential for, uh, DLE to have a presence there, uh, to man the bridge. Um, yeah, I can get more details on that, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm gonna open, Board Members, any questions? Yeah, go ahead Erin, Erin and then TJ.
Okay, um, I actually have two questions, but for, about the bridge, is there any chance of closing it at night? Would that be a possible?
Yeah, so as far as the hours go, um, for the bridge, I think the plan right now, uh, for DOT is to match it to Kahikani Park. Um, and if I'm correct, I think that park is closed from ten PM to five AM. Um, so I think we would match the hours of that park to the bridge, uh, would be closed, uh, ten PM to five AM. Uh, so basically, close overnight, yeah.
That makes a lot of sense, okay, and then this kinda goes within, um, Department of Environmental Services. I think there was money allocated last legislation session for the Wahiwa Pumping Station to, for the overflow. Is that correct and has that started?
Um, I believe, yeah, you're correct, so I started with, uh, Senator, uh, during the interim, so I can follow up on the details of last session's appropriation, but I don't think any like work, yeah, no, no work has started, um, on the pumping station, I don't, I don't believe, um, but I can get a, an update on the project and the, and the fund availability for that project.
Okay, thank you Malakai, thank you, and TJ?
Thank you very much, um, Malakai, right?
Yes.
Hi, aloha, thank you for the report and the information. Malakai, I had two questions, um, both having to do with, uh, uh, freshwater park event that you had at Lake Wilson recently. Number one, um, how are the homeless encampments and the homeless population around Lake Wilson being addressed? And number two, the genki balls that were made that day, do we know what the success rate of using the genki balls in the alaway? And is that something that can be eventually used in Lake Wilson?
Yeah, thank you for the question, um, so I'm not sure exactly, you know, to what extent, um, the state has looked into, you know, dealing with the homeless in the area, um, I'm sure, you know, when cleaning gets underway, um, that'll probably have to be addressed, um, and when they go to make improvements in the area, um, that'll have to get addressed. Um, as far as the genki balls, um, I am, you know, not an expert on the, the science behind it, but, um, yeah, so I don't know exactly what the success is on the genki balls in the alaway. I have heard from people, you know, that since they put them in there, that it's gotten cleaner. Um, there's gonna have to be, you know, some like physical removal of items out of the, the lake, I think, and, you know, more substantial cleaning than just the genki balls. Um, but, uh, based on what I've heard about the alaway genki balls, you know, they do make a difference, they do help. Uh, there's gonna be, has to be more substantial cleaning efforts as well.
Uh, thank you, Malakai, and just, just a follow-up to that, um, do we know what other physical objects need to be removed from the lake? And also a quick question on the pedestrian bridge, do we have a final price tag on that project yet?
Final price tag, I'm not sure, I know, uh, that DOT is going to be transferring, kind of like, I don't wanna say holdover funds, but, um, additional funds to cover the cost, uh, I think they're transferring, delegating four point two million dollars to the city. Uh, but that, that's on top of initial costs, so I can get the total cost for you.
And would that be on top of the twenty-three million dollars that was already allocated for that project? It'll be an additional four million before or after it gets transferred over to the city for management?
So the, yeah, there's, that four point two is in addition to, uh, the, the total that was already appropriated for the project. Um, and I can follow up with DOT about, you know, if those funds are delegated before the transfer happens. Um, I would think, um, I would think so, but I can, I can check on the, the, kind of the timeline for that process, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you, and while you're doing that, would you also humor us and get the final price tag for the construction of the H-three tunnel, if you don't mind? Thank you.
H-three tunnel, okay, I'll follow up with that one as well.
June is next, but let's keep the questions to our area, we, cuz we are running behind schedule, thank you June.
Um, just briefly, I, I spoke to Senator Dela Cruz, uh, last month, and, um, he's right about the lights, the lights are gonna be installed, they're proposing, proposing a cutoff time. Um, but there's one thing that still needs to be worked out, is that when it get, when the bridge, the actual bridge gets turned over to the city, they, the city is gonna be responsible for security of the bridge. ADC and security can take care of the Whitmore end, the land. ADC and security can take care of the Whitmore end, the landslide. But the bridge will have to be taken care by the city. That's my, my understanding from his conversation.
Yeah, so the ADC and potentially Department of Law Enforcement can kind of keep an eye on the area around the bridge. But the bridge itself, yeah, will be maintained by the city.
Okay. Thank you, Malakai. And at this point, everyone, I have three people who have been waiting online, so. Ali, is that you? Ali?
Aloha. One of my question is about the security thing about the bridge, since it's already going forward and all that. I just want to clarify the liability, the liability if someone get hurt. Is it going to be the city and county? Or is it going to be the ADC and security? What if something happens in between the middle? You know what I'm saying? It's going to be very dangerous situation over there, period. You know, everybody knows that, that lives in the community. Everyone that lives in that Ka'ul, they all know, even Donovan know too. So he understands too as well, but the safety is serious because we do have children in the village. That used to walk on the main road before, when it was just the two single roads. You know, they used to walk across that bridge. So I just want to know of clarity. Who will be liable and accountable if someone get hurt? On that, on either side of the bridge, because you said it's going to transfer from the state to city and county. Then it goes to the Agribusiness Development Corporation. You know what I'm saying? So if you can clarify that, that'd be great. Follow me.
Yep, can do. And we know that the, kind of the primary concern for the community about the bridge is security. So we're aware, that's, you know, the number one question on people's minds. So we'll clarify that and, and yeah, we'll get that way.
Yep, thank you, Ali. And same question that I, the concern that I had mentioned earlier. So thank you for working on that. And then Dean, you're next.
Uh, yeah, Malakai, just for your information. DOT's reference of closing of any pedestrian bridges on the island of Oahu don't exist. So to say that, because the park closes at ten PM, that's a sitting county thing. But don't try and put yourself in a corner, because if it comes back from DOT, they're not going to close that bridge. They've never said that to us in any of the meetings that I recall. And we brought up just about virtually every question that was possibly could be raised. So do check with DOT and check also with the city if there is a possibility of time limitation of the, that bridge. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, and one more, and I think that's Alicia.
Hi, Ma'alo. If I remember correctly, the whole thing about the bridge started when some people. Were saying that they had difficulty getting home from work. And if there is a cap on closing the bridge at night. Some people couldn't make it by ten o'clock. They get home about eleven. So the purpose for the bridge is for them to get home. Thank you.
Yeah, I can, you know, of course, the, the op, you know, the objective of the bridge is to provide connectivity between the communities. And people who have to commute, not have to go all the way around. So, you know, I guess there is a trade off of, you know, security versus, you know, providing that connectivity. So of course, we want to do both. And like Dean said, you know, we can get more details about the exact closure and what the proposed plan is for. The closure or non closure of the bridge at certain times. So we'll get back to the board about that.
Okay, thank you, Malakai. I think we're good. We covered everyone virtually and in here. So thank you very much. We're going to move on to Representative Amy Peruso. And right now, ladies and gentlemen, it's about nine fifteen. We still have a bunch more to go through.
Aloha, Mai Kako. Nice to see everyone out here in Whitmore. So I want to start my report by talking a little bit about something that happened last session. Because it's leading to a community meeting we're having at the Smoking Boar out on the North Shore. So last session, a couple of colleagues in my, colleagues of mine and myself. Started to look at the Midway Free language. And Senator Vidal is also really involved in this conversation and looking at the way that it. Really circumscribed or limited native Hawaiian practices. And we thought that was unconstitutional. So we fought really hard to get the law changed during session. We were unable to do that. As a result, the Native Hawaiian Legal Council filed a lawsuit. So now they have filed an injunction against the state because they agreed with us. And the state can't impose any penalties on women who are engaged in Native Hawaiian. Midway Free practices. But in the meantime, we have to go back into session and rewrite that law. So we're having a community meeting on November third at the Smoking Boar. And I invite folks to come. It's going to be a late afternoon thing and just talking story, giving people updates on the legal case. Our possibilities for legislative language and then how to move forward. And then tracking backwards on October thirtieth, we're going to have a community meeting at Milani High School. So I recognize that's not going to be the most popular space for this audience. I, in the past year, I've had nine community forums. The majority of them have been in Wauhaua. I've also had three out in Waialua. This will be my first one in Mililani. And it, my district now does extend to Mililani. So I also need to provide opportunities for those folks to engage. So we'll be talking about community priorities for the legislative session. I hope folks can join us. I, I wanted to address a community's concern that came up because I think, you know, it's going to be addressed at the ADC meeting as well. But I, I think the community kind of deserves a, an explanation about, from my perspective. Recent events. So maybe some folks here remember back in twenty eighteen. So community members who lived here back in twenty eighteen. We had a similar kind of conflict with a licensee and ADC licensee and community members. And the conflict emerged because Dole for decades, for five or six decades, had an established practice. Where community members maintained the fire break between their back doors, which were very close to the property line. And, you know, the, the ag land that these licensees were using. So, or the, the land that Dole was using. So there was a pretty significant hundred fifty foot, two hundred foot buffer. And community members all around Whitmore, like on both sides of Whitmore Avenue. Have been using that land for generations to provide sustenance for their families. And also to engage in aloha and practices that support the perpetuation of culture. So it was important for me back in twenty eighteen and now to make sure that. To the extent that we can develop arrangements that allow those practices to continue, we do that. We met with community members from Whitmore. And tried, Wendy Gady is a new executive director for ADC. With the passing of James Nakatani, she's taken over leadership of the agency and she really is brand new. She hadn't been involved in any of the conversation. She didn't have any background about the work that ADC has done in our community. And the conflicts we've had in our community and the situation on Kauai. So she, you know, her learning curve was basically vertical. So we wanted to explain the historical context of what had happened in twenty eighteen. To ask that she explores that kind of compromise, that kind of agreement. Because in twenty eighteen, that ADC licensee and the community members came to a compromise. So that they can continue to use that buffer land to engage in practices I just described. And that licensee is also able to cultivate the land that he is licensing. So I was hopeful that that kind of arrangement, that kind of conversation at least could happen. And I, I think that's, that's kind of separate and apart from my understanding. I, I was also then really surprised to see advertisement for events that I didn't know about. And so I raised questions about those events that had to do with mud bogging. And I, you know, I honestly. Was only alerted about those things because community members reach out to me. So I, I really tried not to get involved in conflicts between private citizens or around private land. And I, I. Offered to meet, to help the Director, Director Gady. Understand the historical context a little bit better because it's public land, because it's ADC land. And so I think that that's, you know, kind of where we are now. And I think that it, I mean, I think that all of this is a learning curve and, and what ADC is now and what ADC becomes. Is something that ADC and their board has to determine. That's not something the legislature gets involved in, only to the extent that we craft our statutes. So I'm very familiar with our statutes. So I'm very familiar with the activities that are permitted and not permitted. And I'm also, because of my previous engagement with ADC, I'm very familiar with what licenses look like. And the parameters of the licenses. So that's kind of my engagement and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Representative. One quick question. I feel like you left, you left a sentence dangling because you said, and that's why we're here now.
What, oh, I just mean that they're going to be discussing. So I mean, the, the previous conflict I was describing, like how I first started to get involved in this. Well, the twenty eighteen situation was resolved. We have a good resolution. The current situation, I don't think that's resolved. I think that's an ongoing issue. And I think that's an issue that ADC has to resolve. It's, it's land under their jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you for that. Board members, any questions? Virtually, Dean, is that Dean? Oh, Ali, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Aloha. Aloha, Amy. I just wanted to remind you, thank you for what you've done in twenty eighteen. Because we've all been there, all of us from the community, we did reach out. We did reach out, we did remind people of Royal Crown lands. We did reach out to, to the community and try to reach out to the state and come to eye to eye level and communicate. I did take you to places. There was cars on the side of the hill. You know what I mean? All close by the rivers and stuff like that. So these things is real. All this stuff that we're talking about is real. Now, the problem's still yet going on. If the thing is good, then it's good. But if it's got desecration on Royal Crown lands in the Apu, then there's a problem. There's always a problem because there's Kukane Loko right there. Kukane Loko is a very important place, especially if you're a Kanaka Maoli with Kulianna. When you do Kulianna as a Kanaka Maoli, you should automatically know that Kukane Loko is Apu and sacred. Not just that little area, the whole entire bowl. Just because there's things going on between the bowl, we have to deal with what's going on with these times. But at the same time, can we do it? Or does it have to be the same deceitful way that we Kanaka Maoli Hawaiians been getting involved? That's why we get involved, because plenty deceit has been given to us. Plenty lies have been given to us. And we still invite to come our house and eat. So we get plenty problems with what's happening right now. And we're proud of what she's done for this community, truly. She's been there and listened to the people for real, like full on, for real. Involve, engage with the food banks and the kids. So we appreciate the work she's done. And I'm just keeping it real, because we always talk about this engagement, our Royal Crown lands, about the state. You know, we're always talking about jurisdiction. Who truly has jurisdiction on these lands? On these Royal Crown lands. If you want to use HRS law, you need to go look under the RJCP. The Rules Judiciary Proceed, Court Procedures, Section B. The thing tell you who is in charge of all of these lands lawfully on the international law. If you want to look at it lawfully. Because what we're talking about is something special. We're talking about Aina that feed people. We're not talking about corporation mockery. We're talking true breathing people ancestors with blood. And for me personally, it doesn't matter what color you are. If you're born in this land, hey, then you're a kamaaina to me. If you're a Malahini from someplace else and you love this land, hey, mahalo. Thank you. No abuse the place. And that's all it is. We're so colonized that we forget. Till we go back down and we realize. Mahalo, mahalo nui, mahalo nui. Thank you.
Thank you, Ali. Kalamai on that, but we are, we are running really tight right now. So thank you. And thank you, Dean. Any other questions for Representative? Okay, okay. Thank you.
And that's why we work with the military very closely. And I'm here to listen to your concern, Ali. Mahalo. And I'll be working with you as the Minister of Interior. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, mahalo. Okay, Representative, any other comments or anything? You're good? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone for, yes, go ahead. Can you go to the microphone real quick? Thank you.
I have a question that it actually involves a lot in this community because I do a lot of outreach here. But what is your guys' take on having a family community bank educational wise? Because I feel that there's the barriers that is causing a lot of this ruckus unnecessarily.
I think that, uh, well, I am an educator and I'm a parent. So, and I think that actually that's what, not just Whitmore, but so many of our communities are really hungry for. Is activities and spaces for activities and support for activities that have really been gutted from our communities. Like our communities are starving for this kind of thing. So I want to create that kind of space. That's why I've been involved in the conversation around the skate park. That's why I've been involved in pushing on the sitting county for renovation of the gym. I am concerned about how we use ag land. I sit on the ag committee and I introduce bills about soil health. I work with Citar. I talk to the academics, the scientists who study this stuff. I talk to the aloha Aina who are working, doing all of this work. And so I wonder if there are. Some activities that should be restricted to certain areas and, and maybe not using ag land. And, and I think that's really my, my deepest concern about recent activities, to be honest. And I mean, that's, I, I think that the reason we're seeing this, like, and even with the dirt biking. We see illegal dirt bike riding on East Range. And that's extraordinarily dangerous because it's military land. And you don't know what they're doing over there. Like they're training and they're engaged in activities. And I don't want our kids to be over there to get hurt. No one can reach them, you know. So there are a lot of concerns. I think that we need to have more conversations about what kinds of activities we want our kids to be doing. And how can we support them? And, and honestly, like, we're, it comes from the state government and the city government. We're, we're literally starving communities. So I feel that. And I know that I'm like part of that problem. So I want, I want it to be different.
Okay, one last question. Thank you very much. And thank you for the question because that's a fair question, especially in our community. Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. Yeah, so don't forget to give us your name later on.
Aloha, Mai Kako. Jasmine Corpuz. I am a member of this community. I live here. My ohana is here. I also am an aloha Aina advocate for this area. I just wanted to make a comment on the, the activities and the events. I want all of you kamaaina to know whether you Malahini of this place. Or you live here, you born here, whatever it is. What you're here for, if you're here for the events, there is nothing in here that says that we cannot have an event. Okay, but we do have to educate ourselves of this Aina. Because you cannot call yourself kamaaina and you cannot call yourself aloha Aina. And you cannot tell everybody that you're doing right by Aina if you don't do your homework of the Aina. by Aina if you don't do your homework of the Aina that you are standing on. And I think that is the overarching picture that everybody needs to understand, especially those of, those of us in our community. Because I get it. I get ohana that, that, that like dirt, ride dirt bike. I was, I was raised that way. Yeah, the danger and all of that, that doesn't, that, that doesn't freeze us, right? That's our mountain. That's our backyard. We ride. We're gonna ride no matter what. It doesn't matter who is, um, overseeing the land. It doesn't matter who you supporting. No, it doesn't matter who's in politics, who's governor, who's president, whatever. That's our backyard. So we're gonna do it no matter what. So I'm gonna be honest with you guys. You have to do your homework of this area though. There's a right place and as Kama Aina and Hawaiians and Kanaka Maoli, we have to understand that. So it's not about the events. It's about the place that you stand on. And I getting, and I getting emotional because from two thousand eighteen, what she was talking about was my ohana. My generational farming ohana that they was trying to kick out. And I had to stand. We had to stand. Plenty of you guys faces over here and even, I don't even, I don't even recognize because we've been going through all of this since two thousand eighteen and nobody show up but us because that's our backyard, right? Anybody gonna stand up for the backyard and you never gonna know how to thing affect anybody until that's your backyard. So unless you live here, unless you Kama Aina of here, okay? Unless you, um, have ohana here, you have, um, uh, you have Coco to this place. Yeah, um, I don't think anybody should be talking about anything, any type of event that will desecrate anything of our Aina, of this place. My family, my ohana, eh, I'm gonna tell you guys right now, plenty of those Moloka'i, hui, that came, that's my ohana. They came because that's their culture. That's what we raised in. But I told myself too, this is not the place at all. There's a time, there's a place for all of that and us as Kanaka, us as aloha ina, us as Hawaiians. We have to understand that. Us as Malahini, we have to understand that. Okay, so we support the ones that support community events. It is. The, the events, like I said, the, the motocross, the, the mud bogging, the whatever type of events that is good for our keke. Right? Good for the next generation. We going support. But the reason why the real OG Kanakas and the real OG Kama Aina of this place is not here is because they understand that that not supposed to happen over here. It's entertainment purposes, not supposed to happen on this Aina. If, if, if you let go someplace else that's not considered crown land that government like claim, claim, go. But not this place. Because if you wanna know, really know about this place, you do your homework. Because this place is important to us as people. This is the birthplace. This is the center. This is the pico of our people. Yeah, this is called a wahikapu for a reason. Wahikapu, you're not even supposed to grow food, but eh, the Aina is, is forgiving. The team gotta feed our people. So that, so right now, that's the objective. Okay, but everything else, wahikapu means kapu. And if you aloha ina and you Kanaka, you know. Understand. I love you guys. I love all my people, but we gotta educate ourselves.
Okay. Thank you very much. But you never, we need your name. Okay, I apologize. My bad, my bad. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Because we are at nine thirty, nine thirty. And we need to still reset board business to go. So we good? We good for now? We can always come back and make another meeting.
I can try one time.
Yeah, but real quick, because
Real fast.
Thank you.
I was homeless from eleven years old. My name Jason Heppa.
Jason.
I was homeless from eleven. I live at Kiwala Basin in Abas. Yeah, I go through the system. I got adopted by one guy who own one motorcycle shop. Motorcycle riding changed my life. Gave me structure. Gave me something for look forward to. Gave my step dads for something for takeaway when I was naughty. Do you know what I mean? Responsibility of taking care of your motorcycle. Okay, we get a lot of kids understand about the place. We get a lot of kids on the road gonna kill themselves pretty soon. I see them all day going up and down the road by my place. Get me wrong. All of those kids talented. We get over hundred Hawaiian kids in Hawaii right now. Nationally ranked in the motorcycle and racing community with not really no place to go. And they going up and down our highways. You know, so that's all I get for say. I just wanna put that out there. Really can change people's lives. Yeah, thank you.
That's a good one. Thank you very much. Come, Uncle, come.
Aloha. My name is John DiSoto. I'm a retarded, I mean retired politician. I was a city council member for sixteen years. I lived over in the Makaha side. Like a chicken skin, when he just made mention about all the things that what a dirt bike rider did and what he did and stuff. I was very, very young. I used to go ride dirt bikes with my dad. I was like seven years old when I rode a dirt bike at, in Hawaii Kai before the homes were built. What it did for me, took me all over the world. I represented America in riding dirt bikes, the motocross. I lived in Czechoslovakia. I lived in Barcelona. I mean, yeah, I represented the whole world. I mean, with, with the Americas and all over the world. Seventy-seven years old, I still racing and I still ride dirt bikes. What it does, what it did for me, I'm looking at the kekis, what it can do for them also too. I understand the Aina. The Aina is very important. But the whole thing is too, we having a lot of problems, you know, with the military. You know, they going out and all the Hawaiian civic clubs always calling me. I'm the only one that the military allows to go up to Kohuku in the areas because they cannot find the archaeological sites. My dad, our dad, my brother Bruce them to my dad, our dad was the one that made all the trails. We went to the archaeological sites, didn't know what is it, burial site stuff. But when the federal government came, they took over everything with the state. So all the Aina, the, the, the very special places and stuff like that was all used and abused. And the Aoli, that shouldn't have happened. You know, it's just like, I'm in the Motorcycle Hall of Fame in Columbus, Ohio, representing America. I'm in the Hawaii Sports Hall of Fame. I live in Makaha. And can you imagine, you know, just from being a small kid, still went all over the world, what it did? Of course, I went to Waina High School. You know, I was an all star football player, undefeated wrestler. I did all kinds of things and stuff. But the dirt bikes is the one that keeps me going still. And what, see the kids, they've been my moopunas. And the other kids, young kids, they're just completely building up and they can see that what they gotta look for and take care of first is the one they looking at in the mirror. And what I've seen, and that's what it did, not just for me, but a lot of other people too. So, but
Thank you, council member. Everyone, can we give a round of applause to council member? Thank you for your service. Thank you for being a council member. And I'm sorry, but we're at nine forty. I gotta finish this meeting.
The whole, the whole thing is too, with all the injuries I got, I got knee surgeries, broken back. I got a foot peg went in my armpit in Chalons, France. I had to go to a boot finding specialist. You know, I had all kinds of broken back and stuff. The worst thing I had, I had like about twelve concussions. Everybody thought it was from my mom, Frenchie DiSoto, slap in my head. No, it was for racing dirt bikes. And that's what qualified me to run for politics, the brain damage I got.
Thank, thank you, everybody. Thank you. We have to get back on our agenda at this point, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry, it is nine forty and we have to finish up our agenda by nine forty-five to wrap up and close this facility. So, ladies and gentlemen, we are now in board business. At this time, I need a motion to approve our July fifteenth and September sixteenth minutes.
So move.
I'll make the motion.
Thank, thank you, TJ. Uh, is that a second, Dean?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you for the passing of that. Call for disclosure. We, I'm sorry, we, we, I have to finish this part. Okay, can you, I have to finish our meeting though. Because we have to finish by nine forty-five. Okay, thank you. Okay, where are we? Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, call for disclosure by board members, any meetings or events you attended? Hearing none. Moving on to item three, uh, two correspondence and distribution. Okay, moving on to board actions. A, B, and C, the only thing, uh, is we that, that we need to follow up on is Queens. We'll do another back, uh, follow up with them and then also to a couple of the items that we had going on today. We will go over it. Excuse me, can, excuse me, can we please have some quiet so we can finish our meeting, please? Thank you. Item C, committee reports, education. Sylvia, any report? Sylvia, any report for education?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I just, just want to announce, uh, La Lohua High School celebrating its hundred year centennial event. Um, a lot of events happening throughout the next several months. We had the Homecoming Parade, the Fall Festival. There's a gala, uh, being planned for April. So other events as well. You can call La Lohua High School for more information, eight zero eight, three zero five, three thousand. Get more information if anybody would like to participate in some of the events coming up.
Thank you, Sylvia. Again, ladies and gentlemen, could you please? Can you please take your conversation outside, Representative, everyone, so we can finish this meeting? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to military, uh, no report from the military. We had a report today. Transportation and Ampo, Joe has left, um, and so we are on water and we had that, uh, we had the presentation today. Hawaiian Affairs, Dean?
No report, ma'am.
No report. Okay, our next board meeting for the Waihewa Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board number twenty-six will be on Monday, November eighteenth at the Waihewa District Park Palikoa meeting. For those of you just to be familiar, we meet at Waihewa and we meet at Whitmore because we are the Waihewa Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board. So next month, we'll be in Waihewa. Okay.
Hello. Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
Can I make a real quick announcement?
You may, sure.
We have a voter center open in Waihewa, okay, at the District Park. Cer- ceramics room. So there is no excuse for not voting, okay? So please get your vote in. There's a drop off box there. It's only open until next week, Friday. So please get it in. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much. And it is nine forty-two. I'm just gonna skip down to item number C in cases of impacts, anyone? Hawaiian Electric Company notifications. Within the next several weeks, a pole will be replaced or installed at two four three Kellogg Street as well as two two seven Kellogg Street. Any questions or concerns, please call Hiko at one eight five five, three zero four, one two one two. Again, uh, poles are being installed on Kellogg Street at two two seven Kellogg and two four three Kellogg Street in Waihewa. Any questions, call Hiko at one eight five five, three zero four, one two one two. And without any objection, we will conclude the rest of this meeting, carry over to next month's meeting. And with that, no objections. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.